Evening, my name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on the 28th day of October 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. We are going to observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me as you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any student, employee, or public awards and recognitions this evening, so we are on to the adoption of the agenda. There is one modification to put questions related to the workshop in for A, and then move everything else. So interim financial statements would be B, modified course proposal would be C, middle school dual-language immersion considerations would be D, division literacy E, V S B A delegate assembly proposal F, and behavioral and mental health supports for students' year two outcome will be G. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion for the agenda as presented and modified, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Vice Chair Weems. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote on the agenda as presented and modified.
Okay, so Dr. Green, how do you vote? And Mr. Bowen Steele, how do you vote? Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented and modified.
Thank you. We are on to the superintendent's reports and recognitions, and Dr. Robertson, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Well, members of the board, here are a few items of interest for you and our families. I'm happy to share that the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kimsfeld High School has been named the winner of the Innovate 757 Tech Night Award for Innovation Education sponsored by Old Dominion University. Tech Night brings together entrepreneurs, business leaders, technologists, and government officials to celebrate people and organizations who are making a significant impact in regional tech. This award celebrates advancements in technology and entrepreneurship education. I'd like to recognize our amazing EBA students and staff who not only attended but also volunteered at the Tech Night event at the Chrysler Museum. They embody creativity, collaboration, and purpose. About 200 Virginia Beach City Public Schools students celebrated the Power of We kickoff event October 4th at Callum High School. The middle and high school students are members of their school's tied coalition and discussed how to promote a sense of belonging in their schools. Among the facilitators were staff members from the Office of Opportunity Achievement, the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, and six students in our Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow program. Three years ago, high school coalitions began meeting about once a month to brainstorm how to change school culture. Now the effort has expanded to our middle schools. Participants left feeling inspired, with one 7th grader noting, "I have what it takes to help change my school." I'd like to thank the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities for partnering with us and helping our students be agents of change in their communities. The Virginia Beach Convention Center was abuzz with more than 3,500 students and family members October 16th during the Academies and Advanced Academic Program night. As usual, our students did a great job representing their school, and that's a good thing because some of the young attendees came with a list of questions to ask about the various programs. Visitors were impressed with how we offer specialized experiences for students interested in engineering, business, math, health services, the arts, environmental studies, and so much more. Our advanced academic pathways not only reflect our students' diverse interests but align with the current and future needs of our region, preparing them for success in employment, enlistment, or enrollment. The Virginia Beach Education Foundation hosted its annual TGIF celebration October 16th at the Sandler Center, honoring the creativity and dedication of Virginia Beach City Public Schools educators. TGIF stands for Teachers' Grants Improved Futures. About 150 guests gathered to recognize 67 grant awards totaling more than $222,000. These grants, made possible through the generosity of annual sponsors and underwriters, support projects that bring fresh, engaging ideas to the classroom and strengthen community partnerships. Another fun event is coming up this Saturday to support the Virginia Education Foundation when Sheriff Rocky Holcomb's group of sheriffs play the champs, the defending champs, that's us, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and the Turkey Bowl, which will raise money for the foundation's beach bag program, so please come out. Public school staff will compete against, again, public safety players in this flag football game at Ocean Lakes High School starting at 10:00 AM on Saturday. Simultaneously to this event on the football field, the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission is gathering local vendors and volunteers to hold a fall clothing swap, food drive, recycling, and composting event. And then finally, I have a three-minute video to share with you that features our staff, our academy students, and our 5th graders sharing exciting moments from last month's STEM day at the Oceana Air Show.
Today, we are here at the Oceana Air Show. Each year, all of our 5th graders from Virginia Beach City Public Schools have the opportunity to come to the air show and participate in numerous STEM activities. Today, we have about 5,000 5th grade students that anxiously have awaited this opportunity for their entire elementary career, and as you can see, you can kind of feel the excitement in the air. The most exciting part instructionally of this opportunity for children is that they get to see the science instruction that they're receiving in the classroom come to life. Probably one of the most exciting things that we see is the development of the relationship between the high school students and the elementary students each year.
We're gonna do a really fun activity, and we're gonna act like we're fishermen, and we're gonna have five whole seconds to try to get as many fish out of this water as we possibly can.
What's your favorite subject?
Math.
Mine too. So at the end of middle school, what you can start doing, if you love math like me, or if you love science, or if you have a career interest in that, in the end of middle school, you can start applying to Virginia Beach School academies.
The high school students' knowledge of the elementary curriculum and how their academies fit in grows exponentially each year. It's a great way to give the 5th graders a chance to see if they're interested in health science, to see if, you know, there was other academies out here too, and have a good time.
Like even there was just tiny toys that they could do, but it's different when you go out of school and do the same thing that you would do in a school. So I feel like it was a great opportunity for them to learn different things they can do in the future.
And 5th grade, be on the other side of it, it was a lot different because I didn't know what I wanted to do, and now that I'm the one helping them out, it just kind of feels surreal.
Kids are doing a whole lot with hands-on activities, they're getting their hands on with the STEM, connecting math and science, so it's absolutely amazing.
On the science, the technology, the engineering, the mathematics, but also just steering up and gearing up for what's to come.
Learning about the professions out there and learning how they can find what they love and apply it back to what the world might need.
So I learned about a lot of STEM stuff and how lessons filter water.
We had a balloon station. We put balloons and liquid nitrogen in. We had this like station, and it was a metal box, and we put metal against it, and it like had a spark.
The coolest thing I saw today was the jet.
The Blue Angels fly the Boeing FA-18 Super Hornet, a multi-mission strike fighter, versions of which have been operational throughout the fleet since 2001.
And now this is just an extension of those learning activities out here in the real world and in our community in Virginia Beach. So it's an exciting opportunity that most children don't get the opportunity to participate in, and we're just very blessed with our partnership here with Oceana.
Yes, outstanding. It's definitely inspiring to see our students flying high, and I know Mr. Freeman and Mr. Culpepper got excited the last part because it took them back to their days when they were Top Gun pilots. Our academies and our partnership with the Navy continue to help our students become future-ready, and so thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report. However, I do have some recognitions.
Yes, recognitions.
Yes. So tonight, we've got several recommendations. We'll start with Jaclyn Kenny. Jaclyn currently is an admin assistant at Corporate Landing and Kimsfeld Elementary Schools. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next assistant principal at Lanstown Elementary School. Congratulations. I see you have some guests.
Thank you. I'm thankfully accompanied by my family, my husband, and my three children, who are students of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and my awesome principals and assistant principals have mentored me along the way from Kimsfeld Elementary and Corporate Landing.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Next up, we have Frederick Franks. He currently was a division chief in the Naval Criminal Investigative Services, or NCIS, was also a former associate deputy director in the Federal Bureau of Investigation, and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for him to be the next coordinator of security and safety schools in the Office of Security Emergency Management. Congratulations. And I know you have a guest.
Yes, there I do. Thank you. My wife, Janet Franks, she was a biology teacher at Callum High School, very proud, another member of the Virginia City Public Schools family.
Yep.
Also, I can recognize my director back there for the art of state school.
Yeah, very good. Congratulations. Next up, we have Casey Morrison, currently a transportation area supervisor in the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for him to be the next coordinator of transportation in the Office of Transportation and Fleet Services. Casey, I see you have some guests.
I've got my wife Natalie and that is director of transportation.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you, and welcome to a great team. And that concludes my recognition.
Thank you. Okay, so I do know that we have a couple of board members whose tablets are not functioning, so if you could just get my attention with your hand, and we'll do a voice vote until that's fixed. We are on to the approval of the meeting minutes for October 14th, 2025, regular school board meeting. Is there any modifications to those minutes as presented? Okay, seeing none, those minutes as presented are motioned by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Okay, I call for the votes to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Madam Clerk?
And Dr. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowen Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the meeting minutes from October 14th.
All right, we are now on to public comment. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section is for the school board to offer an orderly form to receive public comments during the school board meeting. I call upon all speakers and persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the school board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the first speaker?
Madam Chair, there is one change. Speaker number 12, in person, has asked to be moved online. So we'll begin with our first, is a student speaker, Madeline Massey.
Hola, me llamo Madeline Massey, yo soy un estudiante de First Colonial High School. Empecé con este programa cuando estaba en el jardín de infantes. Ahora, once años después, estoy furioso por el hecho de que un programa en el que he pasado casi toda mi vida está siendo eliminado. For those of you who may not have realized it, you just witnessed a direct benefit of a program that this board has deemed necessary to cut back on. My perspective on this issue is uniquely different than others in the sense that I lived through this program. I dedicated 11 years of my life to it. I am the product of the one-way system that is being proposed in option one, and after hearing me speak, you may think that this option worked well. However, that is not the case. I spent five years learning two subjects a day in nothing but Spanish at Allentown, and when I got to Great Neck, that went away. I went from learning half my day in Spanish to only an hour and a half every other day in a subject that had previously been taught to me in English, and my grades suffered in that class as a result of it. Another effect that the board fails to recognize was how it felt to switch our math and science to English. After five years of being challenged by learning those classes in Spanish, I would argue that my peers and I were far more advanced as a result of having been continuously stimulated in that second language, and we constantly sought after more in our time at Great Neck. Additionally, the supposedly emergent Spanish classes we were placed in over those three years were teaching us a level of Spanish that we had mastered by the second grade. You may have noticed that I have not yet mentioned option two, as because option two is not an option. As one of only 19 districts in Virginia and less than three out of 16,000 nationwide with a program like this, it sets VBCPS apart from many other districts in the area, causing many families to purchase homes in the area just for the chance that their student might get to participate in a program such as this. So if the question is what option I support, my answer is this: Option two is not an option, and option one is the board's way of making it seem like the best option for your student. I stayed silent when the board lessened this program for middle schoolers, and I stayed silent when they took it away from high schoolers entirely. But I refuse to stand on the sidelines and watch the board strip its students, both current and future, from a program that results in students who are not only fluent in a second language, but students who feel challenged and stimulated in their academic lives. The board should be looking for ways to make this program a standard for all students at all levels and at all schools, not quietly take it away piece by piece. He estado en silencio durante once años y no voy a permitar que esto junto silencia a ningún otro estudiante. And if you don't know what I just said, go ask a 4th grader. I know a few who would be happy to translate it for you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Desiree Brown, then Alexis Overman, then Cody Connor. Desiree Brown? Alexis Overman?
Ms. Brown's on her way.
Good evening, my name is Desiree Brown, and I'm here to speak plainly about what's happening inside of Cox High School. I've submitted safety concerns, I've documented threats, I've asked repeatedly for a safety plan. On October 1st, a 504 meeting was held for my daughter. On October 2nd, my daughter was harassed and requested a fight by another student. On October 3rd, my daughter was stalked, followed home, all the way to her doorstep. On October 6th, my daughter was suspended for five days. She's never had any previous discipline record. On October 7th, it was investigated after my daughter was already suspended. I appealed it on October 7th, and then I submitted my grievance to I appealed it on October 7th and then I submitted my grievance to Madam Kathleen Brown. After that, I was retaliated against. And then on October 9th, the incident report from Assistant Principal Marcus Turner was Under Code 22.1-279.31, Principals are legally required to maintain accurate and timely documentation of incidents involving student safety, discipline, and disability accommodations. Any Principal who fails to do so may be disciplined by School Board or the Department of Education. Cox High School claims to prioritize equity and student well-being, but when a child with the 504 protections is left vulnerable, when retaliation replaces resolution, and when documented complaints go unanswered, those claims collapse. After submitting a complaint and a grievance to Ms. Brown, I received a response from Ms. Leanne Turnbull. She emailed me and told me that she would not address my grievance or review it. She told me to contact the school, the same school that failed and falsified the first incident report. I am requesting that Assistant Principal Marcus Turner be held accountable for his actions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexis Overman, Cody Connor, and then Alberto McCallas.
My name is Alexis Overman. I'm a proud military spouse and mother of four, including my daughter Harper, whose story I'm here to share. We moved back to Virginia in July of 2024. Harper had a 504 plan from Kentucky and while our initial meeting gave me hope, her struggles quickly escalated. Between August and December, she was sent home repeatedly with fevers that were emotional meltdowns. Her 504 was revised to include breaks, timers, and visual aids, but it wasn't enough. I believe not every teacher was informed of her 504 plan. In music class, Harper began having issues mid-year. Her teacher claimed to know about the 504, yet accommodations wasn't in place until I spoke to the Assistant Principal. Why most parents ensure plans are implemented? It's the school's priority. Despite her ADHD and ODD diagnosis, Harper was denied an IEP under IDA's Act. Schools must evaluate students showing signs of disability, ignoring this as a denial of FAPE. While Harper was not denied an evaluation outright, the school consistently overlooked how her emotional dysregulation, resistance during transitions, and academic tasks, meltdowns, and avoidance of classwork and difficulty attending class was clearly impacting her academic performance, resulting in her continuously being denied for an IEP. Then came the moment that shattered me. I received a seesaw message saying Harper had harmed herself, which is directly from her teacher in her 504 plan, scratching her arm until she bled. I rushed to the school in tears pleading her help. Still no crisis response was initiated as required. I was still brushed away like it was no big deal. Risk assessment, threat assessment, under 22.1-79.4 of the Code of Virginia, if there is a preliminary addiction a student possesses a threat of physical harm to sell for others, the school's threat assessment team must act. That didn't happen. Harper was also bullied. I reported it multiple times to her teacher, the Assistant Principal, and her 504 meetings. Nothing was done. Only during our withdrawal did the principal mention an investigation. Virginia law requires notification within 24 hours, documentation, and intervention. Why weren't these steps followed? Harper has been formally diagnosed with autism disorder level one, ADHD, and ODD as of May 22nd, 2025. Her psychologists recommend educational intervention during the significant challenge in social communication, behavior regulation, and academic engagement. Last year, Harper exhibited self-harm, overstimulation protests during transitions and classroom avoidance, behaviors that clearly indicated the need for an IEP. I'll go ahead and stop there.
Our next speaker is Cody Connor, then Alberto McCallas, then Bailey McCallas.
We have a lot of military families and federal employees that live in our city, a lot of people that are losing pay and access to resources. I hope you're working on ways to help them, maybe temporarily waiving their student lunch debt, I don't know, something. In other news, the Federal Department of Education is still being aggressively dismantled with particular attention to the Office of Civil Rights and the Office of Special Education. I guess those are programs our President doesn't believe in. Do you believe in those programs? Do you have a plan to address how this is going to impact our schools and our students? George Washington Carver said, "Education is the key that unlocks the golden door to freedom." Well, in America today, that door is unironically golden and it is actively being locked, barred, and barricaded. Our education system is under attack from every direction. It's being torn apart, which many of you wanted. Structures that support and protect our kids are being discarded, but nobody at any level of government is building anything to replace them. We're just burning down the house that we still live in, and I'm sure it's to save us money, just like you trying to eliminate the dual-language immersion program will save us money. It's always about the money. That's how it's always gets sold. Educating people does have a cost, but it is far less expensive than the price we pay for ignorance. Every elected official at every level of our government, School Board, City Council, state, federal, should be standing up against what's happening in our country right now. Maybe you don't see it, maybe you don't see the attacks on education, maybe you don't see the efforts to control and suppress the media, maybe you don't see the mass incarceration of immigrants in our communities without due process and a growing number of American citizens. Maybe you don't see the federal troops being deployed against American citizens and cities throughout our country. Maybe you don't see the extrajudicial killings of foreign citizens because we suspect them of crimes. Maybe that's no big deal, maybe that's not enough, just being dramatic. We haven't started the second Holocaust, I guess. Is that how far it has to go? Is that how bad it has to get before you actually stand up, before you wake up? I hope not. Make good decisions.
Our next speaker is Alberto McCallas, then Bailey McCallas, then Jessica Bravo.
Good evening. My name is Alberto. I'm a proud parent of two children in DLI program. I'm here tonight because once again, DLI families are facing last-minute changes, unclear communication, and shifting explanations from the school administration regarding the future of our program. For the beginning, families were told that Option One would consolidate and provide two core classes like math and science, but now, just two weeks before the vote, the administration has changed the language yet again. The newest lines now say Option One is contingent on staff and money in one core class. That is alarming. Why are we still hearing about contingency so late in this rushed process? If staffing and funding were real concerns, why weren't they addressed months ago? Families deserve to know what are the true intentions of your administration? Because from where we stand, the goal seems less like strengthening DLI and more like dismantling it. Meanwhile, we're being told that $220,000 is too much to keep our program as is, yet in 2024, leadership received an average salary increase of nearly $20,000, and one administrator now earns over $320,000 with $15,000 raises for the next three years approved by all of you. I am not here to attack individuals, but when leadership compensation grows faster than investments in academic programs for children, priorities are clearly misaligned. We cannot keep saying students first if that is not reflected in your budget. This is not just about bilingual education, it is about educational equity. For bilingual and Spanish-speaking students, it provides a sense of belonging and respect for their identity. This program is not a luxury. It is an opportunity for fairness and academic excellence. Option One is not perfect by any means, but it gives families something. Option Two gives us nothing. Option Two ends DLI as we know it and it abandons the commitment the district, as well as all of you guys sitting here, made to hundreds of students and their families. I urge the School Board to stand with families, stand with transparency, and stand with our students' opportunity. Vote for Option One. Muchas gracias, familias. Están aquí esta noche porque creemos en esta comunidad. Y en esta ocasión, no pedimos privilegios, pedimos justicias para que nuestros hijos les pidamos que voten por la opción número uno. Gracias. And had you attended DLI program, you would probably understood that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bailey McCallas, then Jessica Bravo, then Amanda Einhorn.
Two years ago, my husband and I moved with our four young children from Ohio to Virginia for a new job in Norfolk. We're a biracial and bilingual family. My husband is from El Salvador and a native Spanish speaker, and I'm a native English speaker from Massachusetts. We raised our children with Spanish as their first language. When we moved to Virginia, we were excited to learn about the DLI program in Virginia Beach, specifically the two-way DLI programs at Bayside and Cook Elementary. These classrooms are intentionally balanced with 10 native Spanish speakers and 10 native English speakers. Students spend about 80% of their day immersed in Spanish and 20% in English from kindergarten through second grade, then transition to a 50/50 model in grades three through five. This is very different from the one-way DLI programs at Christopher Farms, Allentown, and Trantwood, where most students are native English speakers learning Spanish. Those classes are taught 50/50 in English and Spanish from the beginning. Because of the DLI program, we moved our home search from Norfolk to the Bayside and Cook school zones so our children could grow up in a dual-language, multicultural environment. Today, we have two children in Cook Elementary and two younger ones eager to join them in the program. It means everything to us that our kids are in classrooms where half of their classmates are Hispanic and Spanish-speaking. Our children are thriving academically and socially. They have playdates with both English and Spanish-speaking friends. Last year, we met classmates who began the year not speaking any Spanish, and now they come to our home and speak entirely in Spanish with our family. That's what true bilingual education looks like. This program has opened a world of opportunity, cultural awareness, and academic growth for our children. My husband and I rest easy knowing that our children are becoming bilingual and biliterate. Please do not end this pathway after fifth grade. Voting for Option One gives DLI students a future by allowing one- and two-way students to continue together at VB Middle. Option Two offers them nothing. It would dismantle the program we moved our lives for. Like most parents, I wish we had a third option, one that expands and enriches the DLI program. Sadly, Options One and Two were formulated without parental input. If Option One moves forward, I also ask the Board to provide a clear educational plan to support the different Spanish competency levels between one-way and two-way students entering middle school. Our children deserve a strong and intentional continuation of their bilingual education. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Bravo, then Amanda Einhorn, then Jeffrey Schreiber.
Hi, good evening. I'm here today as a parent of a first-grade student at Cook Elementary who was enrolled in the dual-language immersion program. I am here to speak in strong support of this program and to urge you to choose Option One. The DLI program has had a profoundly positive impact on my son's educational journey since kindergarten. It is an amazing model of inclusive education that embraces peer-to-peer learning and fosters a strong sense of community. In this environment, students from diverse backgrounds collaborate to achieve academic success together. These are the kinds of inclusive educational practices that should define our school district. Within the program, students achieve native-like fluency, develop a greater cultural understanding, and cultivate a sense of belonging. Virginia Beach City Public Schools should be a leader in expanding, not phasing out, successful programs. As a parent, I am deeply concerned that choosing to eliminate this option would be a step backwards for our students and our district's stated commitment to future-focused, innovative programs. Before making a decision that will have a lasting impact on our students, I respectfully urge you to speak directly with the children in the program. Their voices and experiences will provide the most compelling evidence of its success and significance. It is our collective responsibility as adults to ensure that the voices of children, who cannot always advocate for themselves, are heard. Please take the time to hear their perspective. When a decision needs to be made, I hope you choose inclusion and continue to support this remarkable program. VPCPS has the opportunity to make a powerful statement by embracing a program that exemplifies its stated emphasis on academic achievement, innovation, and preparing students for success in the future. Looking ahead, I hope we can one day grow programs such as this to other commonly spoken languages, such as Tagalog, and continue to support the amazingly diverse community that we live in. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Our next speaker is Amanda Einhorn, then Jeffrey Schreiber, and then Derek Bell.
Hello, my name is Amanda Einhorn. My daughter is a first-grade DLI student at Cook Elementary. I wholeheartedly support continuing the DLI program at Virginia Beach Middle School. This program is what I consider a gift to all students participating. Not only are they developing strong bilingual skills, but each of them are bonding and developing an appreciation for different cultures and perspectives. Research shows that bilingual proficiency and academic benefits peak through adolescence. Ending the DLI program in middle school would be a huge disservice to each and every child who has invested so much into the program through grade five. Our DLI families are committed to this program and I would vouch to say eager to partner with the School Board to ensure its success. Virginia Beach City Schools should consider its reputation for offering forward-thinking, globally-relevant education, not ending it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Schreiber, then Derek Bell, then Tina Loog.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for spending the time to hear us tonight. I'm a proud father of two Cook Elementary students, one is a first grader and one is a third grader, both are in the DLI program. I can't express how much they truly love their program and how much they enjoy going and seeing all the students in their class every day. They've learned so much from both their English-speaking native speakers and also their Spanish-speaking students. But also, the most important thing is the teachers of this program are incredible. I can't say how much I appreciate the time that they take with each child and help them to learn and grow and culturally make them a better person in this environment. Both my wife and I are natives to Virginia Beach. We're both public school students of this area, and I can't express how much I've seen my kids' thirst for knowledge grow being a part of this amazing program. I am going to fully support Option One, as that is the only good option we have at this point. I think it is a disservice as our first speaker tonight, which was amazing, if we could expand it to other places and bring this to more children, I think it would only improve their education and make them better students throughout the time that they have in the Virginia Beach Public Schools and also when they go out into the world. So I think supporting this program in any way that you can possibly do it and expanding it is the only way it should go forward. If it does have to consolidate and continue, at least try to continue it, okay? Thank you, guys, so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Derek Bell, then Tina Loog, and then Carolyn Nelson Nichols.
How you guys doing? I won't take up too much of your time. I'm here to kind of back up my partner, Ms. Brown, on the incident that happened with Cox High School and my stepdaughter. It was just, in my mind, it was a couple of times where in the school, things could have been addressed a little bit different. It could have been taken serious, more serious than what it was. My main duty at my house is to provide and protect, and it came to my door. It made it to my front door. We were told that we should have stayed in the house. I was at work, but they told my family they should just stay in the house, not go back outside. We have other little kids that we had to go pick up at the same time. I just want you guys to pay attention to how you drop the kids off, make sure that they go home. It's not my responsibility for anybody else's child, just my own. It's pretty much really it. She is special needy. She is under the 504 plan. Things were not addressed. We appealed, spoke to Mr. Padella. He actually questioned, why do you think they didn't take it serious at the school? I'm not there. I have no idea. I'm pretty sure kids play around, joke around, but this is kind of serious. Should have never made it to my front door. That's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Loog, and then Carolyn Nelson Nichols.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Tina Loog and I am here as a parent and advocate- My name is Tina Loog, and I am here as a parent and advocate for the DLI program. Before you cast your vote, I ask that you take time to discuss the DLI program in greater depth. This decision is about more than logistics or staffing. It is about preserving a program that gives students lasting academic, cultural, and developmental advantages. Out of the two options being considered, if I had to pick, I would say keep the program at the middle school level and consolidate it. However, I ask that you consider a third option: Keep DLI at two middle schools, Great Neck and Virginia Beach. Allentown, Trantwood, and Bayside students could attend Great Neck. Cook and Christopher Farms students could attend Virginia Beach Middle. This would keep Great Neck's successful program thriving and reduce long commutes for Bayside students. Fully consolidating to Virginia Beach Middle could add more than an hour or more of bus time each day, reducing time for homework, rest, after-school activities. It creates new challenges for working parents already balancing transportation and schedules, not to mention takes kids out of the communities that have helped raise them. If two-school model isn't possible, I ask that you at least consider a phased approach, one that allows all currently enrolled DLI students to complete the program at their current schools before any consolidation takes place. These students and families have already made a commitment to the DIL, and they deserve the opportunity to finish what they started. It would be unfair to ask them to leave mid-program or relocate to Virginia Beach Middle if that's not feasible for their families. When we applied to the DIL, we were asked to commit to the full program through middle school, and now simply we're asking the Board to make the same commitment to us: To honor the promise made to these children and families who have invested so much time, energy, and trust in the program. I recognize that staffing is a challenge, but there are staffing challenges everywhere. Finding and supporting the right teachers is part of the job. Flexibility, such as teaching in math or science and Spanish instead of social studies, can make it more manageable while preserving immersion quality. It's worth noting that just two short years ago, this Board received a presentation outlining plans to expand, not reduce, the DLI program. What has changed since then? Is the expiration of the DLI grant or the division shift away from teacher visa sponsorship contributing to these proposed changes? These questions deserve careful consideration before making an irreversible decision. Finally, research from the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages shows bilingual students outperform peers in reading, writing, and math, and develop stronger memory, creativity, and problem-solving skills, lifelong benefits that prepare them for success in a global world. Our families and teachers have built something exceptional. Please don't let short-term challenges undo years of progress. Keep DLI strong at the middle school level.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Nelson Nichols.
Thank you so much for hearing our thoughts and opinions tonight. I am a product of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and then immediately after that, I had a really great opportunity as a young professional to travel the world. And the one thing that I noticed in all of my travels is that every single country speaks two languages. I would go to a cafe in Argentina, and I could order my coffee in English, and they would understand me. I could go to a coffee shop in Paris, order another coffee in English, and they would understand me. And it was incredible getting to travel the world, yes, one, but, two, I wasn't dual-language. I spoke English. I took three years of Spanish in high school to meet my educational requirements, and then I went off to college. I might have taken a language there I can't remember, but that's what I had going into the world. And the opportunity that we're giving these young kids at an early age to adopt a language, to become bilingual, and to use that as they travel the world and set out on their experiences, I think is incredible. And so, I know we've heard from a ton of parents tonight in support of the program. I, too, am in support of the program. I think that there is an opportunity here for you all to, one, support it, and, two, grow it. Something about this as a Virginia Beach City Public School opportunity for our kids, right, to set the ground for other cities, other states, but honestly, just to give our kids a chance to really thrive in the world. Not sure if that is. So, again, I do appreciate your time tonight and listening to all of the parents that are here in support of the program, but I do hope that you take the time to really deeply consider what this means for the students as a whole in our city and what it can mean for their futures. And ultimately, like I said, I think the minimum is to continue, but I do urge you to think about growing the program as a whole in the long term. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if I may, we're moving on to online, correct?
That is correct.
I think we may have an online speaker that is unmuted right now, so if everybody that's online might just take a moment to make sure you're muted when it's not your three minutes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so our first online speaker is Elizabeth DeCosta.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth DeCosta. Can everybody hear me? We'll make sure it's working.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my son is a first grader at Cook Elementary, and he's in the DLI program. And I just wanted to say how much this program has meant to my family. We uprooted and moved from North Carolina, and in that process, we did our research, and we found the DLI program, and we moved to Virginia Beach specifically for the program and into the Cook Elementary district. So, we uprooted our whole family and, out of the whole Hampton Roads, decided to go with Virginia Beach, and it wasn't for the program. The two options that were presented, I'm just really confused because the funding, when you talk about the budget, it doesn't make any sense. Between Option One and Option Two, it was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, two-hundred dollars difference. And Option One, which is the one school, you're saying that it's because of staffing and transportation. How can it cost more to staff one school versus the current program, which is two schools? That makes no sense to me. And then the other one was transportation. Virginia Beach Middle School has the middle school visual arts program that would be on the same one-bell schedule as the DLI students, and transportation throughout the district is already set up for them. So, when if the DLI students just join, the transportation is already set up for them, pretty much negating the cost. So, when you tell me that the two main reasons why it's so expensive to keep the VBMS open is for staffing and transportation, it doesn't make sense. It's not adding up. So, there's got to be something going on there with the finances. That really confuses me. I just really want to... I don't understand why we're discussing taking away a program. I know it was mentioned at the last Board meeting that you want to see the program expanded to other elementary schools, and inequity was brought up as a concern. Well, if you take away the middle school programs, you're taking that away from everybody for all future elementary programs. That is not an option anymore. So, why would we not keep the middle school program and then work on building the elementary school programs? I think it's important that the DLI program is in every single elementary school in Virginia Beach, but by taking away the middle school opportunity, that's not going to solve the issue of expanding the program into the elementary school.
And that is time.
It's going to take away a future opportunity. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Stephens.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. I'm speaking here today on behalf of my two students that are Allentown Elementary School. Students, they are in second and fourth grade. Much like many of the speakers here today, we moved here to Virginia Beach in 2021, and when we did our research, we knew about the great school systems that existed here, but we specifically narrowed our search down to schools that routed to Allentown and Trantwood because of the availability of immersion program. At this point, I'm sure everyone's pretty well aware of how immersion and bilingual students have better academic outcomes, but I think that we're maybe discounting that these students are getting a stronger global perspective. They're learning about diversity of culture, and they're getting a window into a world beyond kind of our imaginal neighborhood setting. This program is also, I think, one of the few programs that's in place currently in zoned elementary schools that provides an alternative to kids that might traditionally be labeled gifted and provided for challenging environments if they're not able to win one of the lottery slots. Oh, yes. I think that's particularly impactful for my son. He often finds himself bored in class, learning at kind of his grade level, but I think having this additional challenge of learning a second language for him is a really great challenge to him academically. My main concern today is that the options being presented, this process has felt really rushed, a little bit low effort. The first that we heard about these changes coming through was just some school board slides that started getting passed around via email and Facebook. It seemed like a lot of people were not aware that these changes were coming down the pipe, and then we were sent an email basically asking us to make a decision based on very little to no real information on how the program would actually be structured at the middle school level. It felt like the key stakeholders, mainly the parents and the students, really didn't have any input on the proposed options. I would propose, at least at this current time, that we maybe pause, take a step back, reassess potential options. We know that this year's fifth graders are going to be the last to go through the program as it's currently structured, so we've got a year and a half to kind of explore new and compelling alternatives. So, I would request that maybe that's what we do, is hold back, kind of restart the assessment, and talk with the students and the parents currently involved in the program to see what kind of creative options or solutions we could come up with. When we signed up to join the DLI program at Allentown, we had to sign a commitment saying that we'd stay in the program throughout the remainder of our time at Allentown. I assume this is because you guys were aware of the substantial, both monetary and just the staffing commitments that are involved or what it requires from the school board at school. We've held up our end of that bargain. We have stayed and progressed through the program, but at this time, it doesn't seem like the school or is holding up their end of the bargain. Rather than working to grow and expand this innovative program, I think it just feels like we're kind of at the first step of dismantling it, potentially paving the way for it to be phased out for future students, and that's a real concern for me because I feel like this is just a hugely, hugely impactful program that our kids have loved experiencing, we've been really happy to be a part of, and I'm hearing pretty widely that a lot of DLI parents aren't aware that these changes are coming. So, if we're kind of stuck picking one of these two options, I would say Option One is really the only decent option and provide...
Our next speaker is Heather Seid. Heather Seid? I know we were having difficulty with the Zoom, and we had speakers call in. It does not seem that she was able to call in. So, that ends our speakers for this evening.
Okay, and she's not on now?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Let me try one more time. Heather Seid? She's not online, Jay Brown.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Is my microphone working? There we go. It turned off on me. Okay. I don't know where we left off, but I am going to open the floor for any questions related to the presentation that was at the end of workshop for the school security. I'm waiting for my screen to switch. Okay, Ms. Rogers?
You knew I was going to ask you questions. So, back to what we were talking about. I don't remember... I don't see... Oh, wait. I think it's Slide Nine. We talked about... You talked about key access?
Yes, ma'am.
And that being a control, and that we've put number of control devices, access control devices. I know that... We don't want to get into specifics, but I want to say that as someone who worked in the buildings, I appreciate the limited access, but it does sometimes cause issues with teachers, especially for recess, not being able to get back in because there's not backdoor access. And so, I would request or suggest that we really consider backdoor access with badges for our educators because during recesses is when the teachers either have to bring the students all the way around...
Yes, ma'am.
...or they have to gain access by banging on windows or other means. And so, that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention.
Yes, ma'am. So, winning on grant money, we provide access controls in back of schools all the time. I don't have the number in front of me right now, but we do...
Yeah, I wasn't going to ask the number.
No, no worries. Yeah, we do. That's a consideration we get a lot from our building leaders about access in the back for our staff. It's still better to have an access control than a key even for the back door. So, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Right. But if we can get more, that would be fantastic. Because that is something that I do hear from staff, is that, you know, we have trouble getting back in, and these key codes would be great on the outside in the back.
Yes, ma'am.
Then, the other question or maybe comment I had about our cameras and sensors. I know that our videos are saved for a period of time before they are no longer accessible, our security videos.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that like a storage issue that... Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So, there's not a way that we could, like, increase that to be able to access some of those videos longer?
So, Mission Creeping to David Dins' area of expertise, but as it stands right now, our videos typically will be preserved for thirty days...
Right.
Based on the file sizes. So, if you increase your definition of your cameras, the files get larger, and so the storage becomes an issue.
Got you.
There could be a suggestion or a conversation about cloud-based storage, but again, that is definitely Mr. Dins' lane.
Yeah. Yeah. I just didn't know if that was something that we were considering or not considering, but I... Definitely, technology is not my lane, so I'm not going to pretend to know any more about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Felton's device is not functioning properly, and so Ms. Felton was next in line, and then Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy, for this detailed presentation concerning the OSEM...
There you go.
...acronyms. My thought to you, I want to say thank you for that again. Two questions. Can you elaborate on Screen Six? Elaborate on the one, the local and off-site unification training. What is that like? Can you explain that to me? Under recommendations...
Is it possible to get my slides back up?
Slide Six.
I think I can just put it on the board for us. And, Miss, I'm sorry.
Local and off-site reunification training. What does that look like, and can you give more explanation of that?
Yeah, we'll get to the slides. We're all on the same page. So, every school has designated, in their Request Response Team Handbooks, designated an off-school location in an emergency. So, should there be an issue with a gas leak or an issue with the building, they can go somewhere very quickly and then make next decisions. So, every school has an area like that pre-designated in their Request Response Team Handbook. And what we do in a training perspective is we provide our guidance in the best places to choose. I mean, think about things like crossing major thoroughfares or crossing streets. Does the place that you chose have the capacity to handle your students? And if not, what are other options? So, we kind of walk through all of our sites with our coordinators and myself to pick the best position for them should we have to leave the building. We also designated for large-scale reunification. If we had to leave for a longer period of time, we have two facilities that we have MOUs with. One would be the Field House down by the pack, and then it would be the Sports Center on the oceanfront.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Both you and Mr. Jameson brought about good presentation and that you put those two together. Very interesting, like how you formulated it as well. If this particular topic falls under one of these bullets, please let me know. And I'm looking at trafficking. Do we still address that how, where, and when?
Do you mean human trafficking?
Human trafficking, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So, one of our coordinators, Kristy Goldens from her law enforcement, she's also on that committee for human trafficking. So, she meets periodically. I would say it's quarterly, but don't hold me to that. They meet with Virginia Beach Police Department and their Special Investigations Department to look for those signs in our children.
So, is this information getting out to our schools? Are we addressing the schools individually, or is there some sort of program place where our students... And I like how Mr. Jameson was talking about how for mental health, how you have different segments where you look for these things as far as mental health is concerned. Do we have that system, something that we can see or track if we are having human trafficking in our schools?
The Virginia Beach PD SID Division would be the best person to answer that question as far as tracking the data for it. All our administrators and all of our staff are trained to look for any signs of distress in our students. So, if there's that ever come up, it would be forwarded to the Investigative Department of Virginia Beach Police Department.
I do know that back maybe five years ago, it was an emphasis placed on that, and we did have open forum where the police department had come out, and I remember the last one we had... And I remember the last one we had was at Moca. It was very interesting and there were individuals speaking concerning human trafficking. I hear what you're saying, but I'm not really digesting it because I think it's still a concern, it's a problem, and I need to see if we are putting full other emphasis on this, if we're tracking it, who do we talk to and are they speaking to our schools? Because it is about our children.
Let me touch base with the Virginia Beach PD. I'll get back to you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. My question's in relation to the mental health services, so for student support.
So I think the best course of action would be to email Mr. Jameson directly those questions.
I don't know, Dr. Robertson?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, just so my question is, I see that we have five new full-time school psychologists positions, eight new full-time behavior intervention specialists, 15.5 new full-time elementary school counselor positions. So that's 43 total psychologists, 33 behavior intervention specialists, and 238 elementary school counselor positions. And so I definitely think about how mental health is growing in our community, mental health concerns are growing in our community and how we're working to address them. And I seem to remember the school board receiving information about telehealth and the Virginia Department of Education initiatives related to telehealth. And I was kind of just curious about how that might be intertwining as additional support for our students as we're seeing, you know, an increased demand for it. So I don't know if that's something I'm participating in or if you could.
We are. We have a contract with a group called CareSalus that any parent, any family member who lives in a household with a Virginia Beach City Public School student or staff member can utilize the CareSalus platform to when they're having a mental health crisis. And depending on the crisis, it could range from just a connection to you can call these people when you get the opportunity or if it's serious, a actual handoff to a professional, whether it's through CHKD or the Bridge Program. And we get monthly data reports from CareSalus. And what I'm happy to see is we saw a spike in year two of the CareSalus model, which was two years ago. Last year, we saw a decline in the use of CareSalus, lower than it was in our initial year, which I think is an indication that the mental health services that we're providing in our schools and the sense of belonging that we're trying to provide for both staff and students is having a positive impact on our students and staff's mental health. And our counselors and administrators, Ms. Felton, are provided training on the signs of human trafficking and that does get reported. There's a level of confidentiality in those situations. So I think it's definitely a PD reporting anything in terms of numbers, but I think the resources that we've been provided, if you talk about counselors, that was to get us up to the new SOQs. Behavior intervention specialists, those are being placed in various elementary schools where they're badly needed. And then we could not find the psychologists. So they rewrote the position and they called it psychometricians, which doesn't require the same credentials as a psychologist, but provides exactly what we need. Dr. Green could probably provide you some information on some of the challenges she had prior to when we did not have such a focus in this area. Not to put you on the spot, Dr. Green.
And Dr. Robertson, you're absolutely correct. In across, across the United States, there is, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he wanted me to respond to the short.
Mr. Callen and then Dr. Green.
I am very interested in all of this material and I'm in particular going back to slide number six as Mrs. Felton was asking you to address. And one of the horrible incidents that's recently taken place that I won't make reference to other than the fact that it happened. It seems as though there was a reassessment of this three-point approach that you've highlighted. It's called run, hide, and protect. I was hearing through this presentation that that has been reexamined as incidents and events have unfolded. And I didn't know whether or not, A, this was a reflection of some of that new thinking or whether this is still pretty much what has been the subscribed recommendations historically.
When you say historically, sir, which, how far back are you going?
Last three or five years.
So our office gives our hyper-tech training to all of our administrators in our schools and our staff that are requested in our ancillary buildings. We focus on a philosophy-based program, not just a linear step-by-step process. So we talk about empowerment, we talk about decision-making models, we talk about how to manage crises, identify goals, and then we teach, you know, quite simply run, which is an option, hide, which is shelter in place, and then protect if you have no further options. So we constantly look at emerging situations and our office, we believe that we have an obligation to glean evidence from tragedy and be proactive. And so every time we have a national incident or even the smaller incidents, our office is scope locked on these issues and making sure we're gleaning lessons learned from these crises to give to our staff so it's timely. And so it's an evolving training module that we give, but we do incorporate the latest, I don't want to say horrors, the latest incidents in school tragedies that we can give to our staff and our teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Green?
To Dr. Robertson's point with regards to school psychologists, that is a problem throughout the United States with the shortage. I commend Mr. Jameson that if he only has one vacancy, he's done a phenomenal job with recruitment. And I think another thing that has helped with the recruitment in Virginia Beach with school psychologists is that we have probably scaled them properly. I believe they're on a different pay scale than what they were when I was here. They're now getting the professional pay because one of the reasons why we had a hard time in retaining them is because they could leave and go get their professional pay in other placements. And now we are competitive with them. So again, I think that has helped a lot with the shortages that I saw when I was working for the school division.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any more requests to speak. However, our devices appear to be resetting. There we go. And so if anybody's device is not working, if you could just give me a raise hand and let me know that you're in line, Ms. White.
So on slide two, there, the page, page one, it says you engage staff, students, and families in safety efforts. Can you walk me through that and explain that a little more further during the course of a school day? Do you, how is that done?
So from the staff level, we address our staff primarily, the administrators in the summertime, we are less task saturated. So we have annual safety training with our administrators, our assistant principals, any staff they invite. That's our big thrust. We get the top-down leadership engaged with some of the run-hyper tech principles, some of the best practices that we've seen in our industry. And we have, you know, five or six courses that we go through in about a three-hour block of instruction every summertime. And then once we get back to school, we start fighting to get into certain, it's challenging to get in front of our staff during the instructional time because they are so busy. But we do have opportunities during some staff days and some, you know, some periods where we have crisis response team meetings where we give more detailed instruction to admin, admin associates, teachers who are on this crisis response teams on table-top exercises and best practices. And a lot of it is our school leaders make great decisions, but this is a new skillset for a lot of new administrators. So we kind of walk them through it through our experience. So in our office, our office has a lot of law enforcement and military experience where we have mission setting and goal setting. And we talk about empowerment and mindset and then marrying those two with the actual protocols we have in place. And that's really impactful for them to be able to breathe and then operate your plan because as most of those in the military know that sometimes plans don't survive first contact. And so to be able to be flexible and understand what your goals are, it's, we've got a lot of positive feedback from those trainings. And then from our parents, we engage with the Virginia Beach Police Department and community groups, both student groups and parent groups that come to quarterly meetings with the Virginia Beach PD. And I'm present and we kind of go through the same things, the things we're looking for in their behavior and their children and things to look out for as far as safety. So we kind of engage, kind of triad of people who use our services in our campuses.
So, and some of the topics, like is bullying addressed, vulnerability to human trafficking, mental health issues, are that citing?
Those things are all addressed by other fantastic partners in VBCPS. Our office is not engaged in those training seminars, but they are addressed by other experts in our division, 100%.
Good to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, thank you. That's all the questions for now, so.
Thank you very much.
We will now move on to interim financial statements, September 2025, and we welcome Daniel Hopkins, Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, school board members, Dr. Robertson. As of September 30th, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. State revenues are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. And being that we're three months in, you'll notice that we are at 25% that we've received from school allocations that started on July 1st. It's important to note that funding from the state is forward-funded, which means even when these funds are passed through from the federal government, it has already been appropriated and there should be no delay in any of these payments. The next update to state revenues will be the governor proposal to the budget in December. And when I say December, it could be January. Federal revenues are showing as an acceptable trend as of the end of September. We have received Impact Aid payments of approximately $5 million year-to-date. Another important note is federal Impact Aid is one of the only K through 12 programs under the Department of Education that is not forward-funded, which means funds can't be paid by the federal government until they pass the fiscal year 26 budget or they pass a continuing resolution. The amount we are entitled to make, the amount can be changed up or down depending on the federal budget. For fiscal year 26, the House has proposed a $5 million increase while the Senate did not. Currently, we have a $5 million payment with the Department of Education that is scheduled to be received in December, but the federal government can't, can't give it to us until the shutdown ends and the budget is passed. Also, there are staff layoffs in the federal Impact Aid Department, which may further delay these payments. Currently, there is no staff at the federal level to answer any questions. Our federal impact team is monitoring this closely. Local revenues are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. We have received 25% or three months of the transfers from the city. Other sources of revenue through the month are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. They are down by about $320,000, mainly due to the jewel settlement we received last year. The next graph shows that the sales tax receipts are at an acceptable level. Year-to-date through September, we are approximately $990,000 higher than the same time last year. The state has already included in their budget for fiscal year 26 a $3 million increase to sales tax that is already built into our budget. The last graph shows that the expenditures and commerces trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. Please note that on page B3 for health insurance, we split this up between the school and the city. Being a consolidated benefits office, we are in charge of the city's fund, but the city is responsible for funding it. We thought it'd be more useful if you could just see the schools by its own. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, so obviously I understand that we aren't going to get anything unless there's a resolution or an end to the shutdown. However, this is going to then, and I guess I should talk to Dr. Robertson if we're, is this going to delay the 26 payments, 25, 26, or 26, 27?
Those are the current payments that are due in December.
So it's this year impact?
Yes.
That's great, okay.
But it's important that we aren't supposed to lose this money. It's just.
No, no, but I mean, it's not, right. The problem is, is if we're not getting paid, then there are going to be things we can't do because we don't have the money to. Am I assuming this correctly or not correctly? Like, we're, like, you're just trying to figure out impact.
I mean, it's an impact. There's no doubt. I mean, it's $5 million. So certainly we'll monitor that as we go forward. I can't say there's things we won't do because again, we try to budget very conservatively so that we have some reserve during the year that if things come up that we need to take care of, we're able to do that. So we just watch that. It's not that this has never happened in the past. And we have had instances where federal government has these problems and then, then things get very delayed. And so then we're getting money and for prior years in a future year. We just manage it and fortunately our conservative budgeting helps us.
Okay, that's, and that's what I wanted to know. Like if we don't get paid in December, does that mean we're going to have to like stop programming or something along those lines?
No.
Okay, that's, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. We are going to move on to modified course proposal, Algebra II Honors, and we welcome Thomas Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning.
Welcome back. Thank you. Good evening again, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My team and I are here to provide information regarding a modified course proposal in Algebra II Honors that will better align with our math sequence and our future-ready vision while strengthening access to students, sorry, strengthening access for students as they pursue post-secondary options. Through this presentation, we will share the purpose behind the proposal and the request to move this to consent on the November 10th school board meeting. Our proposal is to develop and offer a one-credit Algebra II Honors course that will be available in both the year-long and four-by-four format. There is no budget impact with this proposal as it will use existing staffing allocations. Teachers would implement newly, right, teachers would implement newly created curriculum, resources, and assessments provided by the Department of Teaching and Learning designed to support their ability to monitor student progress and drive in structural change throughout the duration of the course. This would be implemented during the 26, 27 school year. To best capture the intent of this proposal, we must shift our focus from on-time graduation to ensuring students graduate truly future-ready. The launch of our new strategic action agenda this past spring, aligned with the compass to 2030, presents an exciting opportunity to move in a stronger, more forward-thinking direction. The secondary teaching and learning math team has embraced the future-ready profile and begun defining what it means to be a future-ready mathematician. These students don't just complete math courses, they engage deeply with the concepts, build reasoning and problem-solving skills, and learn to persevere through challenges. Mathematics provides an ideal space to help students develop resilience, interpret data in the world around them, and make thoughtful and informed decisions that positively impact their communities. Additionally, students learn to communicate their ideas clearly and collaboratively, applying math in ways that improve their understanding and contribute again to those around them. With this vision in place and a renewed focus on preparing every student for a college career or military service, better known as our three Es, the next slide will revisit the refined draft of our secondary math course sequence. On this slide, you'll again see the refined math sequence developed for implementation of the 26, 27 school year. And to assist with analyzing this slide with accuracy, please again listen to the following points of focus. Just a reminder, the point at which students engage in their first high school credit math course may range from grade seven to grade 10 or 11, and it begins with Algebra I. Under the refined sequence, there is an expectation for all students to complete Algebra I and Geometry while also providing each the opportunity to take Algebra II prior to graduation, recognizing this is often the gateway to higher-level math courses. Algebra Functions and Data Analysis, also known as AFT, will again be reaffirmed as a bridge course. Algebra Functions and Data Analysis, also known as AFTDA, will again be reaffirmed as a bridge course supporting students who have successfully completed Algebra and Geometry, but may, may not quite be ready for Algebra Two. Sequences highlighted in blue promote STEM, Statistics, Computer Science, and other future-ready options, allowing access to college and career pathways. This revised sequence allows us again to focus on streamlining course offerings with three outcomes. One, eliminate barriers for students who transfer in and out of Virginia Beach City Public Schools that better support our transit communities, especially our military populations. Reduce the number of teacher preps and allow for opportunities for PLCs to collaborate on best practices that respond to students based on multiple data points and better prepare students for exams such as the PSAT, SAT, and ASVAB. This slide highlights the high school course options and their prerequisite. First, it is important to recognize that Algebra Two trig is not a prerequisite for AP Precalculus, and AP Precalculus does include trigonometry content. More important, the screen shows that of the ten options listed, Algebra Two is the prerequisite for half of them. This shift was completed to increase access to both AP and dual enrollment Precalculus. And I'll give you a moment to review the other courses and their prerequisites, including the other changes listed in red. By providing Algebra Two Honors, we strengthen our alignment with comparable divisions across our region, which are displayed here and represent a familiar sequence. On this slide, you'll note these divisions offer Algebra Two Honors and an optional AFTDA as a bridging course for those who finish Algebra and Geometry, but are not quite ready for Algebra Two Honors due to skill and or confidence. On this slide, you will see how the proposal aligns with our purpose and its subsequent benefits. This move strengthens our alignment to the future-ready profile, allows us to respond to the mathematical shift from math analysis to AP Precalc, provides target acceleration by incorporating five of the nine trig standards, and aligns our sequence with our neighboring states and divisions. Primary benefits will include, but are not limited to, the opportunity to focus on depth and complexity over breadth, improved vertical alignment of trigonometry topics with, within AP Precalc, increased opportunities to foster academic discourse, and support students transferring with Algebra Two to continue their trajectory into advanced coursework. In developing this proposal, no, we collaborated with all middle and high school uh, principals, math coaches, various math teachers, and even shared this information with a teacher forum, which consisted of teachers of all disciplines in the spring of twenty twenty-five, where it was our high school science teachers who were most enthusiastic in support of these refinements. And finally, in the spirit of budget season, I want to conclude by reminding everyone there is no impact on the budget. We greatly appreciate your attention to this proposal, and my team and I stand by to answer what questions you may have.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, just a quick question because I may have missed it. We did not offer Algebra Two Honors previously.
No, we've had Algebra Two and Algebra Two trig. We have not had an Algebra Two Honors course.
Right. And so this is just a realignment, which is great. I just want to make sure that this is. All right, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Culver, did you have a question related to this? Okay. All right. I don't see any more questions, so thank you very much. Um, we are now on to middle school dual-language immersion considerations, and we welcome Dr. Crystal Wilkerson, Director, Office of K-12 and Gifted Programs.
Good evening. I'm not Dr. Crystal Wilkerson.
No, you're not.
But I am Dr. Calucci, Chief Academic Officer in the Department of Teaching and Learning, and Dr. Wilkerson is on leave, and I am presenting on behalf of her, and I'm joined by Kelly Arbel, our World Language Coordinator.
And I just didn't look up.
I know.
And I read from the paper. Sorry.
No apology needed. That was for the public. Uh, the purpose of today's presentation is to review two proposed options for dual-language immersion program at the middle school level and share the administrators, administration's current recommendations. As a reminder, Dr. Wilkerson has presented proposed solutions, which are displayed here on September ninth and on October fourteenth. Alternative options to the current model were brought forward for the board's consideration due to the challenges related to staffing and program fidelity that the division has been experiencing. Although the middle school DLI program is highly valued, persistent staffing challenges, particularly in hiring bilingual teachers, have led to the removal of eighth-grade civics immersion at Great Neck Middle and Landstown Middle Schools already. Additionally, low DLI enrollment at Landstown Middle School strains non-DLI courses, while high DLI enrollment at Great Neck Middle School drives the need for additional allocations across all content areas. These challenges compromise the program's sustainability. As you are aware, the division is facing more and more budget constraints as well, which compound these challenges. In option one, if it were implemented, it would begin in the twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. All elementary DLI students would begin feeding into one DLI middle school site, which would be housed at Virginia Beach Middle School. Students would take an immersion Spanish class and at least one core content class, most likely math or science in Spanish in grade six through eight. With this option, no new program would be added at Bayside Middle as previously planned. And the DLI programs at Landstown Middle and Great Neck Middle would be phased out after the current fifth-through-eighth grade students complete grade eight. To be clear, in this option, beginning in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, all DLI sixth graders would begin attending VB Middle School when entering middle school. Option two would not include a designated middle school DLI site. Immersion Spanish one-through-three courses would be offered to DLI students, either in person or through distance learning at their zoned middle schools. Based on feedback thus far, immersion Spanish one-through-three course sequence is preferred over traditional Spanish one-through-three courses. And to be very clear again, with the community and the school board, as with all elective course offerings, course availability is dependent on enrollment, class size, and staffing. To ensure a comprehensive analysis of funding, staffing, available resources, and anticipated enrollment, the World Languages team collaborated with multiple administrative departments, including school leadership, transportation, budget, teaching and learning, and human resources. They gathered input, reviewed budget, staffing, and developed a complete overview of the two options being explored. The team also partnered with planning, innovation, and accountability to solicit parent input through a survey available in each household's preferred language. Those results were shared during the October fourteenth School Board workshop, and school board members received a copy of all items and every response. The administration participated in school visits as well as school board members. As a review, this interdepartmental collaboration provided an extensive cost analysis estimate. Each of these line items should be viewed as an individual cost for consideration. As shown in the chart on this slide, the top row represents the estimated current cost of the middle school DLI program in the two existing middle schools. The second row shows an estimate of projected costs if we were to continue to expand to the two other middle schools as approved by the school board in two thousand nineteen. The bottom two rows reflect the two proposed alternative options which were developed to address the challenges shared. One option represents an increase of approximately one hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred from the current program, but would be less than the expansion. Option two represents a savings of around ninety-seven thousand nine hundred compared to the current program. Both proposed options represent cost savings when compared to the original plan to expand the dual-language immersion program by adding the two additional middle schools, an expansion estimated to cost approximately two hundred twenty thousand more than the current model. While the financial impact of either option may appear relatively modest, the sustainability of the program is increasingly influenced by other critical factors. Most notably, the availability of qualified bilingual teachers who are licensed to teach Spanish and teachers who are licensed to teach both Spanish and core academic content. These staffing challenges are largely beyond our control. The administration recognizes the school board will also be required to make thoughtful and at times difficult decisions that balance division-wide priorities with fiscal realities. With all the previous information considered, the collective administrative recommendation is displayed here. For school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, the administration recommends continuing the offerings at Great Neck and Landstown Middle School. The administration recommends that current dual-language immersion students in grades five through eight during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year be allowed to complete the existing program at Great Neck and Landstown Middle Schools. This group would be the final cohort to participate in the current middle school DLI program at these sites. The second administrative recommendation is to phase out the current DLI middle school sites for new sixth-grade students beginning in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. Plans to expand the DLI model to additional middle schools will no longer move forward. Finally, the administration recommends taking more time over the next twelve months to thoroughly review and explore the proposed options for the future. Collectively, we feel it would be beneficial to gather more data to gauge interest during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year in a possible single-site DLI program at Virginia Beach Middle School to better project enrollment. It is also important to consider impacts on things like student and staff scheduling and in exploring DLI-related course offerings at students' zone middle schools if we were not able to move toward a single-site option. In summary, the administration recognizes that this recommendation will be met with disappointment from families and staff. Yet we must plan based on our ability to properly staff the program in a manner that maintains fidelity to program goals. If this cannot be achieved, then we recommend we move in a new direction. The next twelve months will be critical to gather meaningful data and input and information to make a final recommendation in the fall of twenty twenty-seven. And at the, and the administration will emphasize again, both options which would start if approved in twenty-seven, twenty-eight are dependent on available staffing, funding, and student interest. The administration will return to the school board with updates on recommendations after further analysis. At this time, I invite our World Languages Coordinator, Kelly Arbel, to join me, and we welcome questions that you may have at this time.
Mr. Callen?
Thank you for that report. When did the program begin that we are dealing with?
Uh, it originally began in two thousand three at Christopher Farms Elementary School at a single site.
Okay. Staffing seems to be the continuing issue that serves as one of the difficulties that surround this. Were there requirements for staffing in the beginning that are different from the staffing requirements for a teacher today? Or have they continued all along to be the same?
I'll let you address that since we do have two slightly different programs that began at different points.
Yeah, sure. I think staffing's always been a challenge with dual-language immersion, and we've known that. And it's just something that we have been working to, to alleviate as we have continued with the program.
I have no further questions.
Ms. Rogers?
Good evening. Thank you so much for your presentation. After the last meeting, I, I didn't feel like I had enough information from stakeholders, specifically parents. And I've taken the liberty over the last week to meet with most of the parents, and I did so in person and via Zoom, and I've gotten a lot of feedback. And so I want to share some of it right now. I can give you the full list of questions and comments that I have in front of me right now after, but there's a few things that they, you know, highlighted. And, you know, they're great questions and great comments. So again, I'm just presenting this to you as it was presented to me. Um, first on slide five, one of the parents, and they spoke tonight. They don't understand, and I kind of agree with them, we are currently um, having this program at two middle schools for four hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. If we're consolidating to option one, why is the cost greater if we're going to only one school?
Um, it's the transportation cost to transport students from all over the division.
And within that, because we already have, uh, middle schoolers going for the arts program to the middle school, um, do we not already have that transportation in place?
We do, and so this cost takes into account those existing bus routes. And if there weren't the existing bus routes for VB Middle, then that transportation cost would be higher. So we are leveraging those bus routes.
Okay, and, and that was one of the questions that, you know, was asked. One of the, um, comments that is concerning to me is many of the parents talked about giving up their spot in the gifted program for ODS to participate in this dual-language immersion program. And that many of them feel like this was presented as something that would be continuing, and they don't feel like that it is continuing in the way that they were promised and that therefore, you know, the spots at ODS are obviously very important to many parents in our division, and that this is something that they had to make a choice to do, gifted or, or dual-language. And so, um, you know, this is something that they're, that they're bringing up to me, and so I did want to make that comment. Another question that the parents, um, had, had brought up was what happened to the grant from the Department of Defense for this program? It was set to run out in twenty twenty-five, and do we have um, another issuance of this grant? Can we still access that? How is that working?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our first ODEA, or Department of Defense Education Act, um, grant was awarded in twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Um, it's a five-year grant. It expires in May of next year. Um, and we were awarded another twenty twenty-five ODEA grant, um, which will expire in May of twenty thirty, which we will also use to help support the DLI program.
So this is a grant-funded program?
Um, no, not fully. No, it's sublimated by the grant.
Okay, that, and that is good to know. Um, another question that really, um, that was asked is, um, one of the parents is actually a VBCPS, um, uh, teacher whose child is in our program and stated that there are Spanish-speaking teachers in our division that don't know that we have a DLI program. Are we recruiting from within and asking those Spanish-speaking, native Spanish-speaking teachers to be a part of this program so that we are not having to look outside for people to fill these positions and then, you know, fulfill their position with someone who's not, you know, a Spanish speaker? Is that something that we're doing or are we looking into that? That's a, that's all.
Yeah, sure. So yes, we have, and we have hired from within the, the division, um, to, to hire those teachers. Our fourth-grade teacher at Cook came from within the division, and so, um, as. Our fourth-grade teacher at Cook came from within the division, and so as often as we can, we try to find teachers who are already in VBCPS who are bilingual.
Okay, and again, this educator was saying, well, some of these people, I know they don't know the program exists, and so that's why the question was asked. One of the other questions slash comments were, because we have two different programs, we have the two-way and the one-way. Some of the parents were concerned, how are we going to support the students who are in the two-way program if we don't have the immersion at the middle school sites that are not one DLI program? So if we send all the students off to their home middle schools and it's just a class, we have native Spanish-speaking students who started at eighty twenty that are at fifty fifty, but they're now, if we ask them to go into their homeschool and just take a class and not be, you know, fifty fifty, how are we going to support those students?
So when they're entering middle school, is that your question?
Yes.
So even currently now, they're not, they're not taking all-day immersion. Their schedule has Spanish immersion and then one history in sixth and seventh grade. So that wouldn't be vastly different if they went to VB Middle?
No, 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 I mean, option two.
Option two, so they would have the Spanish immersion?
And so, so when you say they would have the Spanish immersion, explain better the Spanish immersion in option two so that, because from my understanding, it wasn't a full immersion at their homeschool, it was a class that would be a fifty fifty? Is that correct?
No, there's no fifty fifty at middle school. So with option two, it's an immersion Spanish course.
So it's one class?
Correct.
So that's what I'm saying. So if they're, if students are going from fifth grade, half and half, half Spanish, half English, and then going to just a class in middle school, we have, Bayside and Cook have Spanish-speaking students that, you know, English is their second language, so how would we be able to support them if we went with option two, is the question?
So for those students who are still identified as English learners, they would have support through ESL, through their ESL teacher, but there would not be any content courses taught in Spanish.
Okay, and that's, and that was something that was asked, and I'm sorry, I'm taking up a lot of questions, but I just was given so many. And then I know that we talked about that there was only one teacher on a visa. Apparently, I don't know if this is the one, but there's a teacher at Tranwood that's struggling with getting a visa and wants to stay at Tranwood, and so I don't know if we're able to help in any capacity in that way.
If you could get with us after, I don't want to discuss a personnel matter at this venue.
That's fine. Okay, I will send the rest of the comments and the questions via email to Dr. Robertson, and if you want me to send them, whatever. I think the biggest frustration with the parents is that they do feel like that they received the survey and then they didn't receive any of the rest's information, they didn't understand a lot of it, and they really wanted more information, and so that's something they really wanted me to talk about. So, there you go.
And we will solicit more feedback.
Mr. Bowens, deal.
I just have a quick question. Do we know approximately how many students would be going to Virginia Beach Middle under the DLI program?
So we estimate it around a hundred and twenty-five per grade level, and again, it's just an estimate based on our current enrollment.
So I don't know if my math is right, but that's about four thousand dollars a student?
We would have to get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, thank you so much, and as I've said before, I had extremely delightful visits to the DLI programs, and it's a great time to see our students and learning and passion and process. And so I do appreciate all the parents who've come and spoken and emailed the board and shared their thoughts on how the program has been beneficial to, not just their students' learning, but also embracing cultural awareness as well. And so I definitely see the value in a DLI program. And so first and foremost, I'm trying to seek clarity as we'll be voting in two weeks on this. I see option one, option two, administrative recommendation one, two, three, four. What is going to be presented to the board to specifically vote on?
So at this time, the gist of the recommendation is that we would not, we recommend not continuing the current model in the twenty, starting in the twenty seven, twenty eight school year, and that we would take twelve months to solicit more feedback and information and come back to you on a recommendation for either option one or option two. So you would be voting on discontinuing the current model beginning in twenty seven, twenty And allowing time for more analysis.
So I feel like that's a lot that's changed since our previous meetings. I think that is a significant change, and I do think that, personally, I would, you know, I think that we need to see that written out a little in more depth, and I think the viewing public and the stakeholders would probably want to see the specifics of what is being voted on as well, because I do support, you know, moving into the middle school option as I previously said. So I'm a little confused at the evolution of this journey and how that was not part of the initial recommendations, and so, and I think probably the viewing public is, might be a little confused about it too. So I'd like some additional clarification on the exact wording and phrasing of what we'll be voting on. I know that our agenda is usually released within, like, two weeks on a Thursday, but I feel like our public needs more time for that. But I think my next question is around staffing. I did see the VB CPS recruitment van, and it's full glory and rap this morning by my house, and so we have unleashed a new marketing and recruitment strategy, and so I do, I do have specific questions about staffing, and that entails, you know, what does the actual pipeline look like for this program? Like, we post a job up, how many people are clicking the link, how many people are filling out the application? You know, I hear staffing concern, but it's definitely difficult for me to quantify what that concern is like. When we say concern, is it two people are filling out the application and then only, you know, one interview? Or is it a hundred people filling out the application, and, and I know that's a no, so I know that's not.
Well, we can provide you human resources data right now.
This is a key question. We have that information now, Dr. Trotman.
I think that's, I think that'd be helpful because people are trying to understand the staffing concern, and so I think it's real. You know, I think it's, we have a national teacher shortage. We're all in competition in the seven-five-seven with filling our seats, with filling our classrooms, and I think putting some hard numbers will help people trying to understand everything that's going on. And my third kind of point and comment is, is, you know, more of just a narrative around the fact that, you know, programs are costing money, and I think to the viewing public, this is a good, a good observation into the lens of the complexity of funding a fantastic public education in Virginia Beach, and I think one of the things that makes me proud of serving on this school board is that we do deliver academic excellence regardless of where your child is enrolled at, and I know that we can deliver academic excellence throughout their journey, but these programs are costing, they do have a fiscal, you know, investment. We are seeing issues around our infrastructure, building new buildings, you know, we're funding pre-K, we're funding mental health services. You know, our youth costs money, and we need to keep that in mind as a viewing public, just as we think about our investments in public education and how it's important to our society. So that was just on my mind. I would like, as I said, some more clarification on what is being, how this motion will be presented to the board, and then with some harder, firmer numbers around the staffing pieces.
I can share right now, Mr. Cummings, that we have three Spanish openings, five immersion openings, and forty-one of our Spanish teachers are on provisional licenses right now. So we can, Dr. Trotman needs to certainly confirm that I have recalled those correctly, but we do take it seriously, and we are facing that as a real challenge. And so to provide a program at the quality we want to provide it has evoked a lot of this conversation.
Yep, thank you so much for sharing, and I know that you all have great investment in our kids and in our program, so thank you so much.
Dr. Trotman, I think he also had a question about how many are applying. Is that something you have, the information, and I thought I saw that you may have had it?
Yes, and certainly I can get you numbers, but we need to recognize that although individuals may apply, we have to take a look at who's actually qualified, and that's where we have the challenge, because if folks apply, it has been a hard challenge to get those who are actually qualified for the position. So going back to some of those teachers internally that are qualified, or some that may be a native speaker but don't have the content. So there are multiple factors in the candidates and some of the challenges that we are facing when we talk about staffing these particular positions. I will do my best to provide a snapshot or an example of one of the postings that we have and how many applicants have applied versus how many are qualified. So we screen them continuously. Licensor screens them continuously, so we have an ongoing process to screen applicants that apply. It's the fact that candidates aren't qualified, and back to your point, that we are being competitive, we're competitive with other local school divisions, but that's the key component, the qualification.
All right. Dr. Green.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to recently visit Bayside and was very impressed and excited about what I saw, and especially with the dual immersion, which I know is something that is newer to the previous ones that I have had experience with when it started at Christopher Farms, and I see the reciprocal value of that, that model, because non-speaking English students, they benefit from interacting in a setting as well as our students who are trying to immerse themselves in the language. With that being said, I do hope that we would be able to come to a consensus with being able to, you know, allow our students to continue on with this, and as I indicated before, it's a great learning opportunity. As one of my colleagues already said, I know we have a lot of challenges, and coming from the perspective of someone who has had to do master scheduling and staffing, I truly understand all those challenges. With that being said, is it possible to get a copy? I kept hearing about the contract, a copy of the contract that parents had to sign? That may be a Ms. Lynetti question. I don't need one with a parent's signature, but I just would like to see what it says.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that Allington has an example. So admission to the program is handled by the schools, and so the different schools have different procedures with how they accept students into the program, some of the ways that they communicate their expectations for the program, and so we, there are examples from schools.
Okay, and I'll work with Ms. Lynetti to get copies of the different versions of the contracts.
Just elementary, yes, at school-based.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dwyer.
So I think what I'm hearing tonight is somehow there was a breakdown of communication. I see a lot of passionate parents, and we've been getting emails, and we heard from Madeline tonight. It's tremendous, and it's very encouraging, fluently speaking Spanish, and I don't think there's, well, I'll speak for myself, I support the program, but I think what I'm hearing is there was a breakdown of communication somehow, like maybe the parents just heard there was no money, and there was not enough funding, and it sounds like it's so much more complicated than that. And in the survey, what was the percentage of parents that responded to that survey? Do you recall?
I do not, offhand, but we can get that to you, Ms. Dwyer.
Yeah, I think that's important, and then there was a conversation about not every parent understood fully, so maybe we just need to review all the data and start over again and get back on course, you know, with the parents, you know, and be realistic and make, get clarification, as Mr. Cummings said, and maybe then go forward. Thanks, appreciate you.
Thanks, Chair Williams.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so a few questions. With, you had answered a previous question that a hundred and twenty-five per grade level was your estimation. Is that, I mean, I'm assuming that you're assuming that everybody would still continue, or how do you, how do you come up with that number?
No, no. We estimated an attrition rate that was similar to what we're seeing in the program now, so we were not anticipating that all students would continue.
Okay, all right, and with the staffing shortage, yeah, I just kind of want to echo what my colleague said earlier, it is real, and I know my colleagues received this email from one of our parents who has a child in the program now, who said that they still don't have a teacher right now currently, and they're using a floater teacher. So is that accurate? I mean, it, so even though it's going now, we still have gaps as of right now, and some of our classes are not filled. Okay, all right. So in your, in your administrative recommendation one, so the, so fifth through eighth grader, so if I'm a fifth grader now, I would continue the program until I finished eighth grade?
Yes.
So that's really till the year twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
For those, so they would all phase out. We felt strongly that we needed to do that for, to recommend that for your approval to give that time, and that that would give the younger students upfront communication that wasn't instant, and then we are now recommending, based on some of the feedback, that we take more time to develop and look into those two options that we've presented to you and come back with a recommendation on those two options later. Get more parent input, study more, and look into the reality of who is going to continue if we were to go to a single site so that there's more information gathered over time.
Well, I definitely think that more data is needed because we had such a lopsided attendance in middle school. We had one of our schools being so many students there and the other not, so that's an interesting kind of dilemma there to see if they would in fact change from Great Neck Middle to somewhere else. Now, but with this twelve months, you wouldn't wait to do that, like you would start getting on that like right now, pretty much.
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. So as these students are still continuing, then you're doing that feedback, okay. All right, very good.
We would definitely feel we owe it to the fourth grade and below to communicate the recommendation for your approval and decision-making as soon as possible, but we want to take some really thoughtful time to do that.
Okay, and then just, just as Mr. Cummings kind of stated, this is kind of confusing for me because we have options, and then we have one, two, three, four recommendations from you. I would love to see one recommendation from staff, not one, two, three, four. Just come back and give it to us, just one and two or three sentences or whatever, because, yeah, it is kind of confusing to see all that.
We can certainly combine it into one.
This is a three-part recommendation, I want a one-part recommendation so I know exactly what I'm voting on.
We can do that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're going to jump around a little bit as we have people that haven't had the opportunity to speak at. Mr. Culpepper. Okay, so we're going to jump around a little bit as we have people that haven't had the opportunity to speak at Mr. Culpepper.
Ms. Williams actually asked part of what I was going to ask, so I'll call that clarified. So I'll reiterate one point, which I think you're hearing several board members say something along the lines of what you just said. We owe it to the people that are in the program now to, if we're going to re-scope and/or phase out, to carry those folks through the program in the way that we agreed to. I'm not sure what the best way to do that is and so I think again goes back to the comments I've already made. So otherwise, I just have one, maybe HR question. So we were asking before about people who aren't qualified. I think that was what you used, not qualified, right? What's, what's, what type do you use as a shortcoming? Is it a licensure that they don't have? Do they not have a license that they need? Is that why they're not qualified?
So the licensure, yes, absolutely, for applicants in the content area and being a native speaker of the language. So those coupled together, so the qualifications for an elementary school endorsement are vast. And so if you have a native speaker but not the elementary school pre-K through sixth grade endorsement, that becomes the concern. And so that has been a challenge.
When you say concern, you just mean that it's state law that they have to have it, right?
They have to have it.
You're not concerned about these people. I'm just clarifying that point.
Well, sometimes you are, you know, so because you may have people or candidates who are interested. And so we do our best to promote any program that the state has offered to support licensure. There are a lot of avenues and so we do that. We market those programs. We tap employees. We do everything that we can. But yes, it is the content area coupled with being a native speaker of the language.
So which one, which one usually is the biggest problem, that they're not, they're not licensed in Spanish or they're not licensed for a course?
So both areas are critical shortages identified by the state of Virginia. So when we talk about the endorsement area of pre-K through six, elementary education, as well as foreign languages, those are identified as critical shortages, not coupled together separately. So it makes it more difficult when we couple them or when the requirement is coupled together.
Okay, still doesn't answer my question though. Which, which one are you, are you coming across as the problem? They're not licensed in Spanish? You need them to be in both, right? I'm understanding that part, right?
I'm giving you both. Yes, sir, because both are a problem. Yes. And so Dr. Calucci mentioned 41 of the Spanish teachers. So we ran the numbers of Spanish teachers, pre-K through 12, that's endorsement. Forty-one teachers are currently on provisional licenses, meaning that they have three years to complete all of the requirements for full licensure by the state of Virginia. So the content area, the Spanish content area itself, if they're on a provisional license, then there's work to do. So that is an issue, absolutely. As well as then you pair that with having the content expertise. So it definitely is critical and concerning. I am going to go back to that word, Mr. Culpepper.
All right, thank you.
Looks like we have Ms. Felton next. Everyone else has had a chance to speak.
Thank, thank you, Chair Brown, appreciate that. Asking the question about qualification, they are asking, are the teachers still required to take their practices too?
Yes.
If, if you don't know about their practices too, it's tough. Been there, done that. So then we, that, that come with tutoring. And I know that some principals take it of very special initiative in that when they want to keep those teachers practiced too. My colleagues, it's something out of the, you got to pull it out of your hat, almost. Had to sit in there and it's almost sometime a four to three hour, three to four hour test just to verify you in a particular language or course, practice tip. Those must, I want to make that statement. That still hangs with me a lot. We are speaking and I'm hearing, but I want something to be made clear to our parents and our students. I am so impressed with our students that it's come and it's taken me back to my Spanish speaking age. I had to do Spanish in First Colonial and in college. I had to take a Spanish. Do not ask me to speak that now. I knew some words. I can hear some words when you're speaking. I can remember some of the words that you're saying. I saw, I know what that word is. But my question is, I want to be clear with my parents and my students that we take this very serious. We're not just tossing around because there's nothing we can do. And we do, we do speak with each other behind closed doors as to how we should move with things. And I want you to know, we are very serious about this. And, you know, one of the parents spoke about students always. I always put students first in understanding because they are, they are my greatest investment because I would not be 26 for the rest of my life. And I'm going to look for those students to come and help me out with whatever, whatever I do. If I go to Spain or whatever and they see me, I want them to help me with the language. But I want to make this clear as well to the parents. It sounds like to me that if we, if we are provoked to do a one-school, middle school, that it's going to take on the nuances of our academies. And we like to pick and choose how many students sit in a seat. Is that how this is going or no?
No, there would be space. So it's already limited because we only have dual-language immersion programs at five elementary schools. So any of the students who complete fifth grade in the DLI program at those five elementary schools would have space at this single-site middle school.
And I wanted to make, be made clear to the parents because sometime in trying to get into some of our academies, which our academies in Virginia Public School is notorious being the beacon on the hill for academies more than in the divisions in this area. We do have those. So I just wanted to make, make sure that they know that. It might be a chance that everybody doesn't have a seat getting in.
No, everyone who completes the elementary program will have a spot at the middle school program.
Thank you so much for that.
Okay, I have a couple of questions and I just want to confirm really quick. So as currently approved, with the 2019 approval, the estimated total cost is currently $646,500, correct? Because right now that's, that's what's been approved, right?
If it were to expand?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, the current vote is to expand because there has not been a differing vote. So the current approved, board approved, is that, is that accurate? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So that's, that's actually a $317,000 difference for option two and slightly different, roughly, I think $75,000 for option one. So it is, it is still, there still is some savings from as approved to doing option one. So I just wanted to mention that and okay, so I'm hearing a lot about staffing and I, I understand that. And that's a, in these areas, I don't think that's just a state issue. I think it's a national issue. I will say, I still have concerns about the fact that we have a handful of elementary schools where you can apply and participate. And then we have a much, much larger grouping of elementary schools that cannot because of the zip code in which they live in. And so I'm, I'm having some heartburn about that right now. So I just, but I, I, I think I really need to make sure I'm hungering down because we're talking about middle school. But I, I do have some heartburn as it stands without expanding the attendance zones. I think if we're going to be offering specialty programs, I, I think that every single elementary school student in Virginia Beach should have the opportunity to apply to that program and have the opportunity to participate in that program. But, and we do that with, I think, everything else that we do. I don't think we have any other programs like this in elementary school. Okay, and I also want to confirm because I think there's some confusion on the slides. Slide six, seven, and eight. That is, it says recommendation one, two, three, and four, but really that's just one recommendation, right?
Yes, so we tried to, and obviously we need to refine it and we will. We tried to break it out for clarity because we had a lot of questions coming forth from the community in the survey that they were concerned their current fifth grader would not be able to continue. Some parents expressed concern that their seventh grader would not be able to continue. And so we tried to break it out just to promote clarity. And so that is why we broke it out. For the rationale for you, but we can certainly merge them together if that would be more clear.
For the purposes of A, the board having a very clear understanding and B, the community having a very clear understanding. You know, my, my one concern is, and I think that the input part of it is important, especially given that we have had this program for quite some time. Is, is pushing this to research down the line another year, is that going to create additional challenges and uncertainty for families that we could have avoided somehow?
If you're asking for an opinion, I try to veer away from that when it's a collective administrative decision. And so I think that's something for the board to ponder certainly and that's, we will follow the will of the board. We did receive feedback that parents wanted us to look at it for, in more detail and wanted another opportunity to provide feedback. And that is where this recommendation was born, to take more time to analyze and really have more finite information on who would be really interested in continuing the DLI program if it would become a single site. Because we need to know that to give you a really good idea, I think, when you're considering those two options.
Okay, and I, I appreciate that it was based on the input. And then lastly, I, I want to mention something that was said during public comment and it was mentioned by another colleague. I believe it was called a commitment letter. And I think you already mentioned that only one school is doing that and that is Allington. I, I'm a little concerned about that commitment letter and I'm concerned about that being a school-based thing, especially since, you know, it was mentioned that a lot of grant funding is, or there was at least some grant funding supplemented. And I'd be curious and I know you'll probably have to check on this, but I want to know exactly how much grant funding was applied to that program versus local funds. But I, I want to see that commitment letter because I do think that if a parent is signing a commitment letter, that that is absolutely a question that we need to be taking a look at as a board. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. I was so interested in sharing what the parents shared with me. I forgot my own question. My question is about option two. I know we talked about the quality of the program. And my concern with option two is whether or not delivering these classes in an online format is best educational practice. From everything I know as an educator is that our middle, middle schoolers especially will struggle with language in an online format. So I, that's my biggest concern with option two is that we're not then providing what the middle schoolers need to be successful. And so, and that's the purpose. So that's my, my, my concern. The only, the other thing I just want to add is maybe suggestions is, I don't know what, no, I, not for you, Ms., or Dr. Trotman. I don't know what we do. I'm su, I'm guessing that there is support when teachers need licensure or want more help with their licensures and I'm assuming that there is. So I would hope that that would be concentrated, you know, with regard to this program. But also perhaps, and again, I've taught other places, so I don't know. But like a team teach model where you have a non-licensed K, pre-K of six Spanish speaker paired with a licensed pre-K to six content person where it's not, it's an educator and a para person to be able to pull off that program might be an idea. And it would, I mean, that's just throwing it out there. I don't know if that's something that we've looked at or if that's something that's even in the budget or whatever. But I've seen that in other places where you have the Spanish speaker not licensed and the professional, you know, with the content, so.
And some of our elementary teacher assistants are Spanish-speaking. So they certainly support and add to the program. But if we were looking at a model like that, it would certainly come with a need for allocations for every classroom then.
Got you. Yep, okay, thanks.
Mr. Brownstein?
Yes, I just want to get clarification. The 125 that you mentioned, that was per grade level? So basically it's like 375. Okay. And then do we know approximately how many middle school students we have?
Like total? I don't know.
We would.
15,000. All right, thank you.
Mr. Callan?
It's fascinating to be in conversations like this because you can hear things 17 times and all of a sudden the 18th time you hear it, you go, wait a minute, I never heard that before. So my question would be directed towards you, Ms. Trotman, and that is, let's take a hypothetical candidate who's got all the licensure that we need, perfectly fluent in Spanish, but they're not a native speaker. Help me understand what that distinction is and is that a hurdle that needs to remain in place?
So, and I thought about that. Good question, Mr. Callan. So that would vary. So sometimes the department has worked with a person who's endorsed but is a native speaker. So.
Yeah, and we, and teachers don't have to be native speakers.
They don't have to be native.
They don't have to be native speakers, but they do have to have an advanced level of proficiency in Spanish. So we do have some teachers for whom Spanish is their second language. And we have some teachers who are native speakers, but that, that is not a requirement that they're a native speaker.
And I'm assuming when you use the term native speaker, that's someone who was born in a country that was fluent in that particular language?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so there's a distinction. We have, so I want to clear that up. So yes, we have some teachers who are native speakers, but they are endorsed in the content area, so they would qualify for the program. Does that make sense?
Well, what I'm hearing in your clarification is the fact that you can be perfectly fluent in Spanish, have all the licensure that's necessary and not be a native speaker, but still be qualified and a candidate.
Correct, yes. So my clarification.
Native speaker was not a limitation?
Right, it's not a limitation. And on the flip side, so no, it's not a limitation, but on the flip side of that, if you are endorsed but also are a fluent speaker or a native speaker, then you would be qualified for the program as well.
Okay, fluency is the key.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please, Chair Williams.
Okay, the teachers who are on the provisional license, the 41, is that 41 Spanish immersion teachers or 41 Spanish teachers or a combination of all?
Spanish combination.
Okay. Is that typical to like other groups? And I don't know what percentage is. Obviously, we don't have as many Spanish teachers as we have math teachers. But percentage-wise, is that pretty typical or is this a high number because of varying circumstances?
I would have to lean into HR.
Yeah, of, of teachers being provisionally licensed.
For the last few years, there have been higher numbers of, a higher number of teachers on the provisional licenses. So when, annually when HR presents, there's a component there that talks about, in our presentation, that talks about the national shortage. And we also touch on the research of the, those. of the, those students completing teacher preparation programs. And so, those numbers have declined over the years. So, that's the trend, that less students are completing teacher preparation programs. Hence, more teachers are becoming provisionally licensed. So, if you didn't complete the program, however, you may be licensed, or you may have a degree in biology. If you take the praxis exam, then that would qualify you, if you pass it, to become provisionally licensed. So, to circle back around and answer your question, I don't have hard, concrete numbers, but I can tell you that we across the board do have a high number of teachers on provisional licenses. The state just came a couple of weeks ago with the bridge program that will help those within one standard deviation of passing the praxis with some modules, then they could become certified. So, the state recognizes that as well, and they've put in place, or the state, you know, Department of Ed has put in place programs and avenues to help support those on provisional licenses, but yes.
Okay, and then, do you know the data of those who are on provisional license? The percentage of actually those who complete and not, you know, actually become full-time teachers? Because I know when, years and years ago, I, I knew two young men who became provision, provisional teachers, and they were just going to do it for three years. They had no intention of continuing their education. And I found that out after I asked them how, why they left. And they're like, oh, I did it for my three years, and I knew I wasn't going to go back to school, it was too much work. So, what, do you know the percentage of those who are on provisional license? Do they actually make it across the finish line?
So, I can't, I can try my best to see what I can come up with, but I tell, I can tell you that in HR, they are tracked. So, those on provisional licenses are monitored, and communication is sent every, you know, 30 days. We have a 30-day reminder, a 60-day reminder. The principal is copied. So, I can try my best to see what I can pull for you, Mrs. Williams, but I can't tell you here and now confidently, yes, ma'am, but I, I can try to see what I can get you. But some do make the decision, they let their license, expire the provisional license. We call them with options, and, and they do tell us, I'm not going to pursue.
Yeah.
Further, so that could happen.
Okay, and lastly, when we talked earlier about trying to get Spanish teachers from within, but if you get a Spanish teacher from within, then aren't you eliminating that Spanish teacher from a required course that students have to take three years of foreign language?
Oh, no, sorry. Okay, so, the immersion, the elementary immersion teachers don't have to have a Spanish certification. They have to have an elementary certification, and they have to be fluent in Spanish. So, it wouldn't take away a Spanish teacher, but it would take away another elementary teacher.
Okay, so for that elementary, but how about for middle school, if we needed more?
Same, yeah, similar for middle school. So, this, like, the immersion social studies teachers right now are certified to teach social studies, and they're fluent in Spanish.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, if that occurred, but we don't actively pull from them.
If you're pulling from within a Spanish teacher from ninth grade or 10th grade.
Oh, for option two.
Yeah, for option two.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
And then, our, if you're on advanced diploma, a foreign language is required for you to get that. So, then, there we are, another shortage type. I mean, it's, it's just a dom, it's just so complicated and a domino effect, but it's the shortages. That sounds great, but then you're leaving that classroom without a teacher or whatever. Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, we are going to move on to the next one, although I, I am just going to reiterate, this recommendation needs to be written into one so that people have the ability to make motions on this as needed. We are going to move on to the Division Literacy Plan, and we welcome Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. This evening, I will share a minor modification to the Division Literacy Plan, and will return at the next School Board meeting to request your consent. Before I move forward, I just want to take a moment to thank you for approving the current Division Literacy Plan, which you approved at the May 28, 2025 meeting. Following your approval, we submitted the Division Literacy Plan to the Virginia Department of Ed by June 30, as required. On October 17, we received a request to make a minor modification to the plan, and to resubmit it by November 14. As a reminder to our community, our Division Literacy Plan has been posted on our Division website, specifically on our Literacy for All page, as required by the Virginia Literacy Act. We have provided you a full copy of the Division Literacy Plan in your School Board packet. And as you know, the Division Literacy Plan template includes the six sections displayed here on the screen. On October 17, we received feedback from the Virginia Department of Ed related to Section Four, Monitoring Student Assessment and Progress. Section Four includes information regarding the assessments we implement, as well as the timeline assessments are administered. When we submitted the Division Literacy Plan in May, the timeline for the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System, or VOWs, for grades four through eight, was not confirmed. We included grades four through eight with the same timeline shared for grades K through three. Since then, updated information has been provided, and we've updated the Division Literacy Plan to include the grades four through eight administration, administrated timeline, which is a two administrations, fall and winter. We also maintain the K through three timeline, which is three administrations, fall, winter, and spring. The snippet on the screen shows the minor modification we were asked to make. I will return on November 10 to request your approval for the pla, plan we presented this evening. We hope that this has provided you enough information. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Rogers?
I just had a quick question about the VOWs. Is it still that it's the same, for early childhood, same exam, fall, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year?
Different subtests are administered. It's not all, every subtest is not administered every time, and it depends on student progress.
Okay, that's good. I mean, I'm only asking because of the time that it takes to do the testing, that three times a year. When I was doing it, it was the same one, and it was, it took a very long time. So, I guess I'm just asking, are we seeing a shortening of that for our educators?
The winter assessment is, in some cases, less subtests.
Middle of year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions. So, we are going to move on to the VSBA Delegate Assembly Proposal. I'm going to be presenting this one. So, every year, the VSBA does a delegate assembly. We vote in June on our committee assignments, and Mr. Culpepper is currently our delegate assembly representative, and Ms. Melnick is the substitute for that. And during the assembly, there is a vote that takes place on the proposals that the VSBA has brought forward to vote on. And so, the reason that this is in our packets today is because we need to make sure that we provide direction for our school board member that's going to be attending to make sure that the will of the board is here. So, you should see this in your packet, there are three total proposals. In other years, we've done two minutes per proposal, so that we don't get into the weeds too much. So, I guess we can start with Legislative Proposal Three, but these will all be up for a vote next meeting. We can either vote on them as a block, or we can vote on them individually. Great, and I will open the floor for any questions or comments on Legislative Proposal Three, which I know is confusing, but that's just the order they received them in. And that one is Assessment Reform and Accountability Reforms Proposed Amendment. And my screen hasn't switched, so I can't see who's in line. And, Mr. Culpepper, do you have anything you want to add about the delegate assembly or?
I mean, I can just restate your summary, which I agree with. So, for those who haven't seen this before, every year, all, all of the divisions in Virginia can submit legislative proposals to the VSBA. Of those, the VSBA will, I'll just call it validate some number of those, and then submit them back to the divisions for the divisions to approve the language. And then, at the, the assembly, which is in late November, all of the delegates for each division will vote to either approve or disapprove each one of these that come through. So, these are the three for this year.
Okay, and for number three, I, I just wanted to comment quickly that I, I am concerned any major policy changes, what a major policy would change, would constitute for curriculum instruction assessment and accountability. And the other thing is, is I have concerns about if something's truly not working, having to wait an entire year to modify it. So, those are my thoughts on that particular one. Madam Clerk, I can't actually see who's in line on my screen, so, or if anybody even is, okay, so we, no more questions on three, oh, Vice Chair Williams? Keep time here.
Yes, I, I would kind of like to ask Dr. Robertson, do you, I mean, what are your thoughts about the reduction of the number of SOL tests and content areas prevent reallocation of assessment? I mean, what, what is your professional opinion on this first one?
Yeah, so, there is a, a committee's been working at the state level for a while around SOL assessment reform to include looking at a new provider. Because I think the consensus is, they're trying to find, if you want to say, the sweet spot for assessment that promotes higher learning, more rigorous instruction, and what type of model that is. So, you heard tonight about the LA VC2, and, and Ms. Williams, you and Ms. Felton have been on the board, and Dr. Green, from your time where in 2007, when we had a strategic plan, it was the first time we talked about this notion of balanced assessment. Let's try to create opportunities where it's not a one-time assessment on a day in May that signals of whether or not you demonstrated that you met the learning proficiencies. Let's try to have an assessment where you are actually applying your learning in a writing form, performance assessment, or a project-based. So, there's, that conversation is still ongoing. And so, I think what this language does is, is it says that we want to deliver high-quality instruction and ensure student success, and we want to support the conversation to continue to find that right balance between a one-time test in a balance, and when do you assess students, at what junctures? There's some camps that say, just do what's required federally, which is reading and math, and sometimes science. Others are like, well, what about social studies? So, I think just, this just says that we want to continue the reform conversation until we can find the right answer.
Yeah, I know we used to have a committee, and I think, I think one of our principals, Dr. Matney, I think, was on that committee years and years and years ago. I'm not sure why it's taken, you know, forever, but, and I have to remind my colleagues that that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Robertson, the SOLs were brought to us in about, I don't know, 1998, 2000, and they weren't supposed to be here for 25 or 30 years, I don't think. I think they were supposed to be here for a few years.
Great, Mr. Culpepper?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, too, that the whole, this whole, this whole Legislative Proposal Number Three is not new. It's just the underlying portion, just that one paragraph, that they're proposed, that is proposed to be added to the existed, to that existing Legislative Proposal 1.7. So, it's like, the key part there is, I think, the, you know, the last half of that sentence, that, that provides for minimum of one full academic year to prepare for and implement any major policy changes that affect curriculum, instruction, assessment, or accountability systems. So, I mean, it's basically trying to put a brake on the legislature from throwing things at divisions, you know, and giving them a month, or three, or four, whatever we dealt with on several things this year, before they got to do those major implementation changes. And it's a double-edged sword, obviously, you know, when, you know, for example, you know, a governor can only serve one term here. Sometimes legislature trying to move fast in a particular direction. But obviously, for us, I think, you know, any given division's going to be happy to have that, the magnitude of throttle changes be kind of slowed down a little bit, so that you can settle in. So, that's the key thing here, is whether or not we would either support or not support putting a limitation on that for one full academic year to prepare. Although, I will argue that there's, there's lawyer language in that sentence, which is the words "major." Well, I mean, yeah, exactly, what's major mean? Right.
Okay. I don't see any other comments on Legislative Proposal Three, so we're going to move on to Legislative Proposal Six. And I forgot to mention that this is because the VSBA does do lobbying, and so, that's what this is all about. It's not our personal lobbyist. But, so, the Legislative Proposal Six is the new chronic absenteeism proposed position. That one is relatively short, and it's up on the screen, and I'm going to ask the clerk, all right? Are there any discussion or questions on that one? And we are going to move on to the enrollment cap for Virtual Virginia Proposed Amendment to the existing legislative position. So, that, that position there amendment is underlined, and it's specifically including advanced placement courses, dual enrollment, and other similar courses. And then, there's a couple of other underlines in the very bottom there. So, is there any questions or discussions on Legislative Proposal Number Eight? Okay, all right, well, this will be up for action at our next School Board meeting, and we are going to move on now to Behavioral and Mental Health Supports for Students Year Two Outcome Evaluation. We welcome Dr. Allison Bach and Dr. Noel Williams, Evaluation Specialists, Office of Research and Evaluation.
Good? Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Williams, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. Today, we will provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the outcome evaluation of behavioral and mental health supports for students. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. In 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a national state of emergency for child and adolescent mental health based on data showing that students' behavioral and mental health were impacted by the pandemic. Multiple supports are in place in all VBCPS schools, including support from school counselors, behavior intervention specialists, the multi-tiered systems of support framework, and the student response team process. In 2324, an implementation evaluation was conducted on multiple behavioral and mental health initiatives that have recently been developed or expanded in Virginia Beach. A part of the recommendations of that evaluation, as part of the recommendations of that evaluation, this year's outcome evaluation focused on the three initiatives shown on the slide where outcome data monitoring was feasible. The BIST and Communities and Schools initiatives were implemented at specific schools, and the base program was accessible to elementary students division-wide. This outcome evaluation included implementation-related aspects of the three initiatives, such as the purpose, target audience, and components. However, the primary focus of the evaluation in this presentation was progress toward the outcome goals. Stakeholder perceptions and the costs were also included. The evaluation also addressed general staff perceptions of behavioral and mental health supports available throughout the division. Data collected for the evaluation included interviews with central office staff, review of program documents, site visits, surveys, student and staff participation information, and cost data. School-based staff were surveyed in April 2025. Overall response rates and total number of respondents are shown on the slide. Compared to the previous year's survey, response rates increased for nearly all staff groups. Compared to the previous year's survey, response rates increased for nearly all staff groups. Respondents were first asked to indicate which initiatives they were familiar with, and then received more detailed questions about these specific initiatives. Because of this, the number of respondents to each set of items varied by initiative. So the numbers of respondents to survey items will be shown on the graphs in the upcoming slides. All staff who responded to the survey were also provided general survey items about behavioral and mental health supports for students. Parents of students at B I S T and C I S schools were also provided items related to these initiatives, while parents of students who participated in the BASE program were invited to complete a survey. Before reviewing the outcomes for B I S T, Communities and Schools, and BASE, staff perceptions about supports and related division-wide data will be shared to provide a broader context. This slide shows staff members' general perceptions of behavioral and mental health supports for students. All staff who responded to the survey received these items. Overall, 79% to 80% of staff agreed there are supports at their school to help students regarding behavioral and mental health needs. In terms of satisfaction for supports, 66% to 68% of staff reported being satisfied with behavioral and mental health supports. Overall, staff perceptions of behavioral and mental health supports improved from 2324 to 2425. In terms of awareness, 82% of staff agreed they knew what to do when students needed behavioral supports, and 77% agreed they knew what to do when students needed mental health supports. To provide additional context, division-wide behavioral and mental health-related data over the last three years were analyzed. These trends reflect the broader environment and are influenced by multiple factors. As shown on the slide, the number of reported suicide risk assessments steadily declined from 2223 to 2425. Students are attending school more. The percentage of chronically absent students declined seven percentage points in 2425 compared to 2223. The pattern for referral and suspension data was less noticeable, although there were slight declines over time for the percentage of students who were referred or suspended multiple times. V B C P S has had a decline in the severity of behavior. For example, there were approximately 400 less discipline hearings over the last three years. At this time, we will review each of the three initiatives that were part of the outcome evaluation. The first was Behavior Intervention Support Team, or B I S T, Professional Learning and Strategies, which began with five elementary schools in 2324. Three additional elementary schools are participating in 2526. Schools were selected based on a review of academic and behavioral data. This initiative provided training and strategies to staff based on B I S T concepts that emphasize intervening early to help students learn replacement skills to reduce disruptive behaviors. B I S T supports schools in using common language, clarifying school-wide expectations, and creating predictable routines and environments. B I S T views students who exhibit disruptive behaviors as missing skills. It provides a range of intervention strategies that hold students accountable for their actions, while helping staff intervene to help students' replacement skills, help develop students' replacement skills. If students engage in disruptive behavior, students may move from their regular seat to a safe seat, which is a desk or seat within the classroom to help the student regroup. If students continue to have difficulty, they may be asked to move to a buddy room, which is a safe seat in another classroom that allows students to reset, and behavior expectations in the classroom to be maintained. Another strategy is the focus room, which is a room that is separate from the student's classroom and overseen by a B I S T teacher assistant. Within each option, students receive help learning appropriate skills, process the situation with staff, and may complete behavior or think sheets to help problem solve and plan for better choices. It is important to note that the V B C P S student code of conduct still applies, and students are referred to the office as appropriate based on V B C P S discipline guidelines. When surveyed, 75% of staff involved with B I S T indicated they were satisfied with the initiative. In response to an open-ended item about improvement areas, one theme that emerged from involved staff was the need for more consistency across staff within a building and in following the B I S T model. One recommendation from the first-year evaluation was to improve communication with parents about B I S T practices. In 2425, all schools held a parent night to share information about the process and philosophy. Overall, when surveyed, 92% of parents of students at B I S T schools who responded to the item agreed they understood the approach their child's school used to help students make good behavior choices. When staff were asked about the impact of the various B I S T strategies on improving student behavior, survey data showed that staff were most likely to indicate common language, classroom morning meetings, and the focus room improved student behavior to a large or moderate extent. Lower percentages of staff indicated the safe seat, coaching or success plans, behavior or think sheets, and the buddy room improved student behavior. The goals of the B I S T initiative are to increase teaching time for all students, decrease disruptive behavior, facilitate lifelong change in skill sets for students with challenging behaviors, and provide relief for adults who are working directly with students. When staff involved with B I S T were surveyed about these goal areas, 60% of staff agreed the B I S T strategies allowed them to increase teaching time for all students, while from 70% to 73% agreed B I S T strategies allowed them to decrease students' disruptive behavior and help students develop missing skills. Higher percentages of staff agreed the B I S T initiative more generally has provided teachers with an option to support students with behavior concerns, as well as provided strategies to intervene before behavior escalates. To investigate the impact of B I S T on students' disruptive behavior, school-wide discipline data for the five B I S T schools were examined in 2223 before implementing the initiative through the 24 or 25 school year. This slide displays the combined data across the five B I S T schools for the percentage of students with at least one referral or at least one suspension alongside the division data for comparison represented by the dotted line. Overall, the B I S T schools had somewhat larger decreases in the percentage of students with referrals or suspensions than the division overall. Additional analyses for individual schools showed four of the five schools had reductions in the percentage of students with multiple referrals or multiple suspensions during this period that were larger than the division, with an average decrease of nearly two percentage points. Three of the five schools reduced the percentage of students with only one referral or only one suspension. However, the decreases were smaller on average than the other measures. This suggests that the impact of this was more notable for students with multiple infractions. The second initiative is Communities and Schools, or C I S. The initiative is operated by site coordinators employed through Communities and Schools of Hampton Roads, who leverage community resources to meet school and individual student needs. The initiative began in 1718 with three schools, and it has expanded over the years with 10 schools implementing the initiative in 2425. Schools have been selected based on reviews of academic attendance and discipline data as well as school feeder patterns. At each school, site coordinators conduct an annual needs assessment to establish schoolwide goals and develop a school support plan. In 2425, each school set one or two goals in the areas of attendance, behavior, and family engagement. Schools could also choose to keep the same goal from the previous year. Throughout the school year, site coordinators held events aligned with their school goals. Examples included attendance initiatives, such as allowing students with good attendance to participate in a basketball tournament, and family engagement events, such as a student expectations paint night. In 2425, coordinators provided 129 schoolwide events related to goal areas, with nearly 6,000 total student attendances across the events. Coordinators also provide events to ensure students and families' basic needs are being met, such as providing hygiene products or clothing and shoe drives. Another key component of C I S is providing individualized student support for recommended students. For these students, the coordinator collaborates with families to set individual goals and plans. Support may include one-on-one mentoring, small group meetings, and connecting with community partners. For example, students at two schools could work with a teen outreach program, which offered students the opportunity to conduct service learning projects. In 2425, 552 students received individualized support through C I S. These students' goals focused on academics, attendance, or behavior. Although the initiative is led by the C I S coordinator, school staff may be involved through collaborating with the coordinator, recommending students for services, or helping with schoolwide events. When surveyed, 96% of staff involved with C I S indicated they were satisfied with the To examine the impact of C I S on schools' progress toward their schoolwide goals, monitoring data collected from C I S were reviewed. Overall, 63% of the schoolwide goals across the 10 schools were met, and eight of the 10 schools achieved at least one of their goals in 2425. Broader schoolwide data related to the goal areas were also analyzed. School improvements over time were compared to division-level trends to determine whether school gains exceeded division patterns. Eight schools had a C I S attendance-related goal. Of these, five showed gains larger than the division in the percentage of students attending at least 90% of days enrolled, and six showed improvements larger than the division in their average attendance rate. The figure on the slide shows the percentage of students attending at least 90% of days enrolled, with data combined across the C I S schools with an attendance goal. The yellow line represents the four schools that focused on this goal for two years, and the blue line represents the four schools that focused on the goal for one year. The dotted line represents division data for comparison. To evaluate the impact, data from prior years were compared to the most recent school year. Overall, regardless of how long schools had worked towards their attendance goal, schools showed larger increases than the division. Fewer schools had a behavior-related goal, and the impact was more variable depending on the behavior measure. Eight schools also had a family engagement goal. Five schools had improvements larger than the division in the percentage of parents reporting they were aware of events, programs, or resources to support their child's education. And six schools had improvements larger than the division in parent reported satisfaction with those events. This figure shows the percentage of parents aware of events with data combined across C I S schools with a family engagement goal. The yellow line represents the school that had focused on the goal for two years, and the blue line represents the schools that focused on the goal for one year. And the dotted line represents the division data for reference. C I S goals showed larger increases in parent awareness than the division overall. Another key component of C I S involves providing individualized support for a smaller number of students. When staff were surveyed about the support offered to these individual students, nearly all staff involved with C I S agreed the initiative had a positive impact on students and families, and provided assistance to staff by supporting students in need. Monitoring data collected from C I S regarding individual student progress toward their C I S goal showed 80% of students with a behavior-related goal met that goal, while lower percentages of students with an academic or attendance goal met their goal. When staff were surveyed about areas C I S may have helped students improve, survey data mirrored student progress data with a higher percentage of staff indicating behavior was improved by C I S, while slightly lower percentages indicated attendance and academics were improved. In response to an open-ended item, one theme that emerged was suggestions for stronger communication between the C I S coordinator and school staff about students working with the coordinator. For example, some staff expressed lack of clarity regarding which students were receiving services, as well as the supports being provided. From the parents' perspective, nearly all parents who responded to the survey and indicated their child worked with a coordinator agreed the resources provided had been helpful for their family. At this time, Dr. Noel Williams will share the information for the final program. The next program reviewed was the Behavior and Social Emotional or BASE program, which was available for all elementary schools in 2018, 2019. This program is a six-to-nine-week, one-time intervention for general education elementary students, primarily students engaged grades K through three, who have limited educational experiences or social skills that lead them to engage in challenging behaviors. The program is located at Windsor Oaks, but elementary students across the division may be referred. The purpose of the program is to teach students coping strategies, problem-solving skills, and social skills needed for school and behavior management. Students in the program have a structured day consisting of morning meeting, academic blocks, social emotional learning, self-regulation, preferred activity time, goal setting, and structured movement. In 2425, 29 students were enrolled in the program. The majority were male, 86%, and 45% were black, and 38% were white. The largest number of enrolled students were in kindergarten, followed by first grade. There are two BASE classrooms that are directly supported by eight staff, including behavior intervention teachers, student support specialists, and teacher assistants. A school psychologist and a doctoral intern are also involved in the program. On the survey, staff members indicated whether they were involved with the BASE program by either working in the BASE program at Windsor Oaks or working with a student who had been in the BASE program. As shown on the slide, 88% of staff agreed the process for transitioning a student from their home school to the BASE program was communicated clearly in the Student Response Team, S R T 504, meeting. And 79% of staff agreed the process for transitioning a student from the BASE program back to their home school was communicated clearly in the S R T 504 meeting. When asked a similar question about the transition experience, all parents who responded to the survey item agreed their child's transition from their home school to the program at Windsor Oaks was successful. And 88% agreed the transition back to the student's home school was successful, and they had the support they needed when they returned. One recommendation from the 2324 evaluation was to prioritize the identification of behavioral supports that can be successfully implemented after students transition from the BASE program back to their home school. As part of this recommendation, the BASE team updated the student transition report. The report continues to include referral reasons, interventions used, progress made, and recommendations for continued support. In addition, the new report focuses on specific triggers, strategies, and outcomes for individuals with clear outcome-driven metrics. Also, staff added an additional academic block to the student schedule. The goal of the BASE program is to decrease aggressive, disruptive, defiant behaviors that lead to out-of-school suspensions. Perceptions of staff involved in the program related to the goal areas are shown on the slide. 75% of staff reported the program provided students with useful strategies to help their emotional regulation and behavior, and 69% agreed it improved students' emotional regulation. Perceptions of improving students' behavior overall and aggressive, defiant, and disruptive behavior ranged from 59% to 61%. Overall, 64% of staff reported being satisfied with BASE. Comments about improvement are focused on students having difficulty transitioning from the BASE program back to the home school. From a parent perspective, all parents who responded to the survey agreed the BASE program was helpful for their child and their family. Discipline data for students in the BASE program were analyzed to determine any changes after attending the BASE program. This slide displays data from two cohorts. Cohort one, students participated in the BASE program at some point in the 2023-2024 school year. And cohort two, students participated in the BASE program at some point in the 2024-2025 school year. In the chart, the blue bar represents the average number of referrals, suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions before attending BASE, and the orange bar represents the average after returning to their home school and after completing the BASE program. For both cohorts, there were declines across all measures after students attended the BASE program. Additional analysis that took into account the number of days students were enrolled prior to BASE and after BASE also showed the same downward trend in referrals, suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions. To identify the extent to which the participation in the BASE program was related to students' discipline patterns, a comparison group of non-BASE students was created for both cohort one and cohort two students who attended the BASE program. This group was identified using several criteria. First, each student had to attend a school that sent at least one student to the BASE program during the respective year. Second, students had to be enrolled in the same grade levels represented in the BASE cohort. In addition, discipline data were considered. Students were selected for the comparison group if they had at least a total number of referrals equal to the BASE cohort's average for the year. This criterion ensured that both groups exhibited discipline patterns that were as close as possible. Finally, consistent with BASE program eligibility requirements, students did not have I E Ps. Because the timing of the BASE intervention varies- Because the timing of the base intervention varied, and students could be entering base at various points during the year, such as in quarter two and three, the focus for this analysis was the trends from quarter one to quarter four. This slide displays average referrals for base students in cohort one and cohort two. Base students are shown by the blue line, and the comparison group is shown by the orange line. Both base cohorts show meaningful declines in average referrals from quarter one to quarter four. By contrast, the comparison group across both cohorts increased in average student referrals from quarter one to quarter four. This slide displays average out-of-school suspensions in quarter one and quarter four for base students in cohort one and cohort two and their corresponding comparison group. Base students in cohort one and cohort two demonstrated notable declines from quarter one to quarter four in the average number of out-of-school suspensions. By contrast, the comparison group showed increases for both cohorts for quarter one to quarter four in the average number of out-of-school suspensions. Consistent patterns emerged showing the base students improved over time, while comparison students' discipline patterns trended upwards. A longitudinal analysis for base students in cohort one from twenty-three, twenty-four, and the comparison group was conducted to examine longer-term trends and discipline events through the school year following their base participation. Students included in this analysis were those who were enrolled in the division for the entire year in both twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. This chart displays average referrals for base students in cohort one and students in the comparison group in quarter one and quarter four across two academic years. As evident by the blue line under year one, base students ended the year with a reduction in the number of referrals. In year two, base students had an average of one point seven six referrals in quarter one, which was an increase from quarter four the previous year. Comparison group students began the second year lower than quarter four of the previous year. A similar pattern existed across the other disciplinary measures. After discipline events improved in quarter four of the students enrolled in base, former base students began the next year with higher levels of disciplinary events, particularly in suspensions and out-of-school suspensions, suggesting challenges with the transition in the new school year. This slide provides the summary of costs last year and twenty-four, twenty-five for each of the three initiatives that were part of the evaluation. The second column provides the total cost of the initiative. The third column shows that a large portion of the cost was covered by external funding sources such as Title I grant funding or funding from communities and schools. The last column shows the total paid by BBCPS for these initiatives, which was approximately seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. The first recommendation is to continue the BIST initiative, Communities and Schools, and the base program with modifications noted in the following recommendations. The second recommendation is to continue support schools consistently implementing BIST strategies and using them effectively. The third recommendation is to strengthen communication between communities and schools coordinators and school staff to support individual student success in their goal areas. The fourth recommendation is to ensure staff who work with former base students have information from students' transition plans at the beginning of the next school year about their needs and recommended strategies to help sustain behavioral gains made during the base program. At this time, Dr. Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer, will share the administration's response.
Good evening again. On behalf of the Department of Teaching and Learning and the Department of School Leadership, the administration concurs with the recommendations presented this evening, and will continue implementing BIST, Communities and Schools, and the base program. Professional learning and coaching support will be provided for the schools implementing BIST. School administrators and behavior intervention specialists will assist instructional staff and assistants with using effective strategies to promote safe and welcoming learning environments. For communities and schools, BBCPS staff will explore scheduling additional check-in meetings with communities and school staff members to better align efforts, improve communication, and coordinate support for our families, especially for families with students at multiple schools. Additionally, staff supporting and leading the base program will increase communication at the beginning of each school year for students who have participated in base the previous year. The communications will be sent to principals, encouraging them to review and share with teachers the student-specific strategies outlined in the base students' transition plans. This additional step will better equip staff to foster positive relationships with students and proactively prepare classrooms to meet our students' needs. And that concludes the administration's response, and staff from various departments remain here to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Callen?
Okay, let me see if I can connect the dots. On page four, or slide number four, you have the staff survey responses, and you've got five different categories of groups that are represented there. And I've done this before and added up a column and divided it by the number of representatives in the column, only to discover, no, 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 that's not how we do things. But if that, in fact, is a correct way of analyzing this column, I come up with an average response rate of thirty-five percent. Would you say that is an accurate way of evaluating the responsiveness?
So, they do vary in how many staff members are in each category. So, there are more teachers and teacher assistants than the other groups. But this was a survey that was for behavioral mental health supports, and so it's possible that staff who were not familiar with the initiatives that we were surveying about, they may not have clicked into the survey.
So, let's take your observation relative to the teachers, that there were fifteen hundred and fifty-six teachers who responded.
Right.
And that represents thirty percent of the total teachers that could have responded.
Correct, yeah, who received an invitation to the survey.
So, I am tracking correctly, and then if I go to slide number seven.
Yes.
Slide number seven tells me that seventy-five percent of the staff involved with BIST were satisfied, but would that be seventy-five percent of thirty percent?
So, it's a little bit tricky because... So, for this survey, we had several different initiatives that were part of it. So, the first question was, are you, please select which initiatives you're familiar with. So, for BIST in particular, it's only at five elementary schools. So, if they selected they were familiar with BIST, they received another question, and that was whether you worked at one of the five elementary schools. So, this is a smaller group.
Yeah, Mr. Callen's question is good. So, Mr. Callen's question calls into question. On slide four,
Yes.
Five percent of staff at a BIST school responded, one hundred and forty-four people. And then when you go to slide seven, seventy-five percent of those respondents, of the one forty-four, which is less than five percent, responded to that.
And five is the parents. That's a parent response rate, actually. Yes, yes. So, I can give you the numbers. We didn't calculate the response rate specifically for those five schools, but I can get it.
Well, let me explain the reason for my exploring the numbers as I am.
Yes.
My main concern is what teachers have to put up with in the course of conducting their classrooms. Anybody who's had a few minutes of conversation with me knows that I'm an old-school guy who used to experience discipline in a different way than the world treats discipline areas today. Many times, what I witness is an unbelievably difficult set of circumstances for teachers to conduct their classes in. That disturbs me greatly. So, the point of all of this is to find out, from the teacher's point of view, is this new-fangled game plan working like we hope it should? Or is it nice on paper, but the reality is, and again, based on the responses,
Right.
it tells me very few people were really interested in responding to the survey data. And if, in fact, that is a fair assessment, that tells me there's not a lot of buy-in.
I can get you the approximated response rates for the BIST schools. I just don't have it right now.
Okay. Well, if you would, that would be helpful. Because, again, my main concern has to do with what teachers have to deal with.
Right, yes.
I care deeply about that.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
And, Mr. Callen, if I may, speak to the BIST program that you're talking about. So, we attend with the trainings with the teachers and the principals, and we've taken part in a lot of them, and they are highly engaging, motivating. And one of the great things about the BIST program is it speaks to one of your concerns, and it really has a focus not on just the students and teaching them the skills that they are missing that will help them regulate their emotions and reduce their referrals. There's a high level of accountability and a big commitment to the program to focus on the needs of the teacher and the teacher's well-being and the teacher's sense of control over the classroom and ability to focus on the instruction. And so, because of that, there's this teacher-care component of it that really teaches and promotes teachers in feeling confident with promoting consistency and redirection with high levels of accountability. In fact, in some states and divisions that have implemented BIST, the referral rates actually go up in the first couple of years because they're holding kids really accountable. And so, there's this learning phase. And so, I would say that with these results, even though we can definitely work with PIA to get more responses, they are very positive from the teacher's perspective, what we're seeing here.
Mr. Callen, if I could build on that, just to maybe draw to slide nine. And I think you see some responses by teachers there with the sample rate you can see in those bar graphs, where you see the goal of increased teaching time for all students at sixty percent. I was drawn to the one on the right side that has provided a way to help teachers with an option to support students at eighty-eight percent. So, you're seeing some skill development. So, you are seeing some teacher response rate there of over a hundred teachers that responded on some of the impact of the BIST program as well. So, I felt it was important to draw you to that slide also because it does give some teacher perspective.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, of course.
All right. Nice, Chair Williams.
Yeah, so what is the number of students in the base program like per day?
It fluctuates, but it's low. So, we can certainly send you that data.
I would assume it's like under ten, under...
Yes, usually.
Is it like four, five, or six, or something like that?
Well, it fluctuates on who's being enrolled in it. So, at the beginning of the year, there's protocols for collecting data, monitoring, going through SRT before immediately sending and putting interventions in place. So, it grows over the year, and then they're there for about nine weeks. We've extended that for kids that need more intervention before they're successfully ready to re-enter. But, yes, it's a low number, usually ten or below. I believe last year, we served, and I hate to say it here, so around thirty students, but I need to confirm that for you.
But I know twenty-nine are there at the same time. So, I'm just trying to figure out with two classrooms, and obviously, you don't want a full classroom because it's challenging. So, I'm thinking five or six at a time is what I'm thinking.
But we can send more data to you over email.
I do, I believe in the report. It says they don't like to have any more than seven at one time. But Dr. Calucci is correct, it does depend on severity of behavior.
Right. Okay, I just kind of wanted to get asked. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to say, I guess, for the public and for my colleagues, that I actually have met with a BIST teacher and have seen all of the different strategies in practice, and that it is highly successful. And having been in the classroom and not fully understanding the tools that are available to educators when they are dealing with behaviors, that this is... I love this program. I'm just gonna say that.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, and Dr. Calucci knows I know a little bit about BIST since we started it. And I think you shortchanged yourself, Dr. Calucci, in speaking to the merits of it. And one of the things I want to add, when the program, and please correct me because I know things change, I've been gone now, what, three years? But one of the things that we pride ourselves, that they now, I suspect, still continue to do, is that when we transition students back to the school, it's not just dumping the kid back into that classroom. The supports are still there. So, there is like a transition period for the student to continue, and the BIST and other staff still work with the student. Also, to keep this home-to-school connection, I mean, the school-to-base connection, Dr. Calucci, I assume too that you all still have like weekly visits from someone from the home school as well, so that the student knows that at some point, I am going back. It could be the principal, a school counselor, different staff. The teacher is always encouraged to come see the student as well, so that when that transition takes place, it's seamless. But the bottom line is, the student and the parents know you are going back with a new set of skills.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I wanted to, at first, I think, if we were to break out the teachers and teachers' assistants specifically, their responses, I think that may be useful because I think that's, you know, what I've heard a couple of my colleagues interested in. And so, I see we have a thousand five hundred and fifty-six of those respondents. And so, I think that that would be, those responses directly impacting the classroom. Of course, I am, you know, happy to continue the work. And I, I mean, the numbers are, you know, they still need work. And that's, but I also want to mention the progress because we also have four hundred more respondents than when you did this survey last time. And so, I do find that to be refreshing. And your mention of the severity of behaviors has decreased. So, I think that's very good. I did have some curiosity about this. Ninety-seven percent of parents whose children worked with a coordinator agreed community and schools helped meet child's needs. Is that ninety-seven percent of those surveyed that responded? Or do we have a hundred percent response rate, or is that the beginning?
So, that's the five percent response rate for BIST parents and students at BIST schools. But on the survey, I'm sorry, we're talking about CIS.
Communities and schools. So, the ninety-seven percent is this three hundred and four?
Yes.
Okay.
But on this, there are two components of CIS. There's like a, there was a school-wide component, but also an individualized component. So, we sent the survey to all parents at the ten schools. And on the survey, we asked if their child had received those individualized services. And there were thirty-four of the parents who indicated that the student did receive individualized services. So, it's ninety-seven, I know it's a lot of numbers, but it's ninety-seven percent of the thirty-four who indicated their child worked individually with a coordinator.
Okay, and do we have a number on how many surveys went out? So, you have thirty-four that responded. But how many didn't respond? You had a response rate, but...
Yes, so for communities and schools, we sent the survey to every parent of a student who was at one of the ten schools. So, it was eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two sent. So, that is the... So that is the, um, three and a half percent response rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Um, and then the other thing is, is I, I really just, um, you know, I wanted to point out, um, especially as we're going into a budget season, that I appreciate on slide twenty-one, how you broke down, um, that we are, the exact amount of federal funding that we are receiving and, um, that, that's six hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then, um, I, I guess we're using local or state funds for the other seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. So I appreciate that. Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. First and foremost, you know, I really appreciate the amount of, uh, data that you put into your presentation with comparison and trend charts. And so that helps us, I think, understand, you know, information from the lens of, you know, what's going on and having a benchmark to look at it against. So that's very, very helpful. And, you know, I'm very impressed as well with, you know, our response rates and, you know, from staff. I think that's a, you know, when I see like thirty-some percent, that's great work. So I appreciate that. And so my questions, I just have a couple of like quick questions as I'm trying to understand everything and just, I mean, I do, I, I feel like I know, but I want to make sure I affirm I know. So when I see base program costing, you know, five hundred forty-two thousand, and that's for the twenty-nine, for twenty-nine students?
Correct.
And is that in addition to what our cost is? Or whatever their cost would, that's in addition to the costs allocated to them for their normal zone school experience, correct? Okay, and so.
Those funds are mostly for staff?
Those funds are mostly for staff, okay. And so when I sit and look at this, you know, there's two, you know, I think there's, I'll just give some of my thoughts, but then I think there's two, you know, there's a couple of ways to look in, at, at this lens and look at this investment. One of my most favorite essays that I've ever read in my life is by Malcolm Gladwell called Million Dollar Murray, appeared in the New Yorker. And so he talks about the cost of treating things as a Band-Aid versus preventative care and how the long-term costs actually outweighs the preventative costs upfront. Um, it's a phenomenal essay, appeared in the nineties. I keep it, read it, try to read it at least once a year because I think there's a strong indication here that, you know, there's, there could be immediate sticker costs or sticker shock in seeing something that's a half a million for twenty-nine students. But if you think the longevity of that student experience within our school system, you know, what, what is the cost if we don't do intervention? What is the cost if we don't dedicate staff, um, to this student? What's the future cost? You know, we know, you know, national data from, you know, about, you know, the prison, the pipeline type, um, scenarios. And so I see this work as a good investment into, uh, you know, into our students to be preventative and intervene, um, to get them on track. And so, you know, I was just trying to understand all these, all these num, um, these pieces, but that's what came to my mind and so I definitely applaud, uh, this great work. You know, you read, um, you read about referrals dropping, you read about suspensions dropping. We see, you know, benchmarks all across this data of improvement. And so, you know, I do think, you know, there's obviously a fiscal accountability, but there's also an investment in the sense that we see something that's working. And, you know, what is it like to scale, what did the cost be to scale? And so, I don't know, it's a very insightful presentation and I appreciate it. And I look forward to now visiting base programs along with, uh, some of the community and schools programs as well in the future. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. So we have a few items I'm gonna read here. Um, policy three dash two seven, policy six dash two eight, policy seven dash two, policy seven dash one three, policy seven dash two one, policy seven dash five eight. We have the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five annual field trip report, Allentown Elementary School RTU replacement, Fayside Middle School RTU replacement, school administration building number six, primary data center and Einstein Lab HVAC replacement, gifted citizens advisory committee appointment recommendations. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda as presented? Mr. Callen?
I hate to admit this, but I got to admit this. What's RTU stand for?
Rooftop unit.
Yes, rooftop unit.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no objections to the consent agenda, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. And I call for the vote to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, the motion to pass for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. I call for a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? I call for the vote to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments for October twenty-eighth.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, the motion to pass for the approval of the personnel report and administrative appointments.
Hey, Dr. Robertson, do you have any administrative appointments to share?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, too. Uh, with recent retirements in the Department of Human Resources, we have, uh, we're pleased that you've rec, you've accepted our recommendation for Julie Hawks, currently an assistant principal at Newtown Elementary School to be a new employee relations specialist in the Department of Human Resources. And then to fill the second position for Emily Hitzman, uh, again, currently an assistant principal at Corporate Landing Middle School to be the next human resources specialist in the Department of Human Resources, again, to fill those two retirement vacancies. And those, those transitions will occur when, when Mr. Delaney and his team have found suitable replacements for the schools.
So before I call for a motion on our next vote, I am going to turn the floor over to Mr. Cummings.
Uh, thank you, Chair Brown. Um, and so as many of you know, I recuse myself from discussions around, uh, health plans and, and things like that. And so I do seek clarity about my participation as vote in, uh, reversion funds. Reversion funds both from my employer and the Commonwealth Internity. And so I wanted to declare a couple of things before we move forward so I can participate. Um, before we discuss and vote on the proposal to potentially, you know, benchmark five point eight million of reversion funds to help build up the VB CPS Employee Health Fund, I must make a public declaration regarding a potential conflict of interests required by the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act two point two, three, one, one, two, section B, section one. I declare the following. The transaction involved is the proposed benchmarking of five point eight million in reversion funds, um, for the health fund. I'm, uh, my personal interest affected. You know, I'm employed at Centerra Health along with thirty-four thousand other folks in the Commonwealth. I'm also a member of a group of three or more persons affected by this transaction, specifically as an employee of Centerra. And my ability to participate, I'm able to participate in this transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. And so I will submit the, um, Commonwealth attorney's letter to the clerk just for public record as well. But they said that I'm able to move forward and vote in this.
Okay, thank you. Um, so before I call for a motion, also, um, I did take the liberty of talking to, um, most every school board member, um, that's here tonight, um, on the phone today or yesterday. Um, and it is my belief that option one is the consensus of the board. Um, so that is the one with the, um, five point eight to the health insurance fund. So I will accept an emotion to approve the resolution, option one. And once it's motioned and seconded, Vice Chair Williams will read it. Motion by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Budget resolution regarding FY twenty twenty-four, twenty-five reversion and revenue sharing formula reconciliation. Whereas on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the school board was presented with a summary of the unaudited financial statements for FY twenty-four, twenty-five, year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, showing the reversion amount to the city's general fund. And whereas twenty-one million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars is the amount of the school operating reversion funds available, excluding debt service and revenues over or under budget. And whereas five million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars is the amount remaining in debt service due to the timing of bond sales, increasing the school operating reversion amount to twenty-six million seven hundred and six thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. And whereas ten million six hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars came in as an additional revenue over the appropriated budget, increasing the school operating reversion amount to thirty-seven million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And whereas three hundred and ninety million seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars reverted from the athletics fund and three hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars reverted from the Green Run Collegiate Charter School Fund. And whereas the total amount available for reappropriation is thirty-eight million ninety-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. And whereas the city is currently indicating FY twenty-four, twenty-five revenue over budget of seven million four hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars, based on the revenue sharing formula. And whereas the net funding available for reappropriation is forty-five million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. And whereas the administration recommends the following for the available funds in the amount of forty-five million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Thirty-eight million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars to be re-appropriated to the FY twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement program. Twenty-three million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding for project one dash zero fifteen Princess Anne High School replacement. Four million four hundred and thirty thousand six hundred dollars to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding for project one dash zero thirty payroll system replacement. Ten million five hundred thousand to be re-appropriated to the school reserves special revenue fund. One million two hundred thousand to be transferred in the form of pay-as-you-go funding for project one dash zero twenty renovations and replacements, various phase three Jericho Road demolition. And five million eight hundred thousand to be re-appropriated to the health insurance fund. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach approves the recommended uses of reversion funds as presented by the administration. And be it further resolved that the school board requests that the city council approve the reappropriation of reversion funds shown above. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. And the clerk of the board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the city council, the city manager, and the city clerk, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twenty-eighth day of October, two thousand twenty-five. Okay, any discussion? All right, I call the votes to vote on option one.
So Madam Chair, we have seven ayes and three nays. The motion did pass for the approval of resolution option one.
Thank you. We are now on to committee organization and board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I just wanted to give, um, a quick word of praise to all of our staff who are involved with the Timbaland weekends in Salem College Park, Salem Middle. Dr. Robertson, our, our folks did an amazing job from NJROTC, our vans, our security, our social media, our principals. You know, I think the true measure of watching event is, do you feel any friction? And I felt nothing. I have no clue what was going on behind the scenes. But I will say that it was extremely well organized. Our team did a fantastic job and we had, I think, really delivered value both to the community, um, locally, but also nationally with such record, with such a, you know, a great known celebrity and musician. And so I know that our kids, our boys are so excited at Salem Middle School. They were screaming and as they're going by, and I was joking, you know, on one hand, they're asking for Timbaland's autograph. On the other hand, they got their Chromebooks open, Googling, who is Timbaland? So, you know, but I loved it. I love everything about this event at our schools and how our, our youth can see someone from their communities find success. And so to you, your entire team, I just wanted to say, you know, job well done. It was, it was great to see the event. I love the parade. Let's do it every year.
Yeah, appreciate that. I have to give a special shout-out. Really the leads of this were Mr. Delaney, Mr. Shattuck, and Ms. Livis. So they did all the heavy lifting.
And I also just want to add, um, that I, I was there and yes, um, city council, of course, um, and their support. But, um, at the end, after Mr. Cummings and Dr. Robertson left, um, there was three checks, um, given to our division from Timbaland's, um, foundation. I think it's called Amazing Courage, if I'm correct. You may, yeah. Um, so it was fifteen thousand dollars for College Park Elementary, five thousand for Salem Middle and Salem High School each. Um, so that was a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution, uh, to our school division. Dr. Green?
Thank you. Um, I want to make our community aware of the wonderful opportunities that, um, we have available at the Adult Learning Center. Uh, last week I had an opportunity to attend a inter-agency council meeting. Um, and the partnerships that, uh, Ms. Harmon and her team have developed with community members such as TCC, uh, Human Services, the United Way. Uh, it includes about twenty or more, uh, community-based partnerships that help the different, uh, programs in terms of once, uh, a young adult finishes that program, whether it's, uh, GED, uh, language acquisition program, or some of the other wonderful opportunities over there. They help them with services, whether, um, transitioning to workforces or other things that will help them personally grow. And just FYI, if you did not know, that on, that catalog that we sometimes receive in the mail for taking online courses such as basket making or a computer course, all of those great opportunities also come out of the Adult Learning Center. So I encourage my colleagues, if you have an opportunity, um, to set up a time and go see the great things that are taking place over there that truly, uh, are exemplary of them truly being a community-based program that serves all of Virginia Beach residents. Just a reminder, on Friday, we have legislative committee meeting at nine thirty.
Yes, um, I have the, the opportunity to be with Sheriff Rocky on Friday at Cook Elementary during a pep rally. And the principal asked him who was gonna win the game. And he most confidently said they were gonna win this year. So expect a new champion.
Ms. Rogers?
I guess on that same vein, I wanted to reiterate that in District Five, obviously on Saturday will be the game, but I actually really want to, um, highlight the fact that this is going, um, all the proceeds are gonna be going to support our beach bags program. And as the community should be aware by now, that, um, SNAP benefits as of Saturday will be, um, paused for many of our families and this will affect our students directly. Um, so if you can come out to Ocean Lakes and see the game and support our beach bags program by coming to the game, it would be so appreciated, appreciated. If you can't be there on Saturday, please reach out to our beach bags program if you want to donate. They have a need, um, for many items that you can purchase or you can donate monetarily to the program. But we will have many students in the coming weeks that will truly need to have that, those beach bags sent home to them so that they can be fed. So that is my concern, is that our students are fed and I will be supporting that program heavily as well.
And if anybody, um, needs additional information, I serve as the ex-officio, uh, member to the board, um, as the chair of the, uh, Virginia Beach Education Foundation. And, uh, the true winner of Saturday's game is gonna be the students of Virginia Beach that benefit from the beach bags program. Vice Chair Williams?
Um, yes, the policy review committee will be meeting tomorrow at three thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my colleagues on the committee, read your package before you come. It's quite lengthy. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go back into closed session. It is going to be brief, I imagine. Dr. Robertson just has something to share with us. So Vice Chair Williams will read us into close. Please make sure that we don't lose quorum up here, guys.
I move that the school board recesses to closed session in accordance with exceptions to open meetings law step forth in Code of Virginia, two dash two dash three, seven, eleven, part A, paragraph seven, eight, and twelve is amended to deliberate on the following. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing or open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or in which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. A consultation of legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public bodies is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Twelve, information relating to the negotiating and award of a specific contract where competition or bargaining is involved and where the release of such information would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Such information shall not be withheld after the public body has made a decision to award or not award the contract. In the case of procurement transactions conducted pursuant to the Virginia Public Procurement Act two dot two dash four, three, zero, zero, the provisions of this subdivision shall not apply and any release of information relating to such transactions shall be governed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act, namely to discuss A, unsolicited PPA offer, B, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, C, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation or pending litigation matters.
Moved by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to go into closed session.
Nope. Were you in trouble reading that because of the noise? Because I would smack, I would just smack that gavel if I wouldn't have.
And Mr. Bones, still, thank you. Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Way too loud.
date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the notion by, motion by which this closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, is there a motion on the certification of close? Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to certify closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for certification of closed session.
Thank you. It is 10:02 and we are adjourned.